Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, August 10th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Council members, it is now nearly 10:25 a.m. and we have six members present, still four shy of a quorum. But we also have a couple of very special presentations to be held this morning. So let me recognize Councilmember LaBange first to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then to begin with our first presentation of today and take it away.
Thank you very much, President Alex Padilla. Please all rise, place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me, I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much and good morning, Mr. President, members of council. It's a great day in L.A., 10th day of August, 2004. We have a distinguished delegation that I'm going to call to come forward from our sister city of Busan, Korea, located in the beautiful country of South Korea. As you know, Busan is one of our 20 sister cities, it has a great tie. Los Angeles is the second largest Korean city in the world, if you could believe that at all, with all the great immigration that we've had to welcome people from all over, but especially from Korea. So I'm pleased to have with us this morning Youngju Kim, who is the president of the City Council for some brief remarks. Youngju?
We are members of the Los Angeles City Council. First, I would like to thank the members of the City Council who have visited and attended our meetings. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet with you. And for your many charms.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, August 10th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Council members, it is now nearly 10:25 a.m. and we have six members present, still four shy of a quorum. But we also have a couple of very special presentations to be held this morning. So let me recognize Councilmember LaBange first to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then to begin with our first presentation of today and take it away.
Thank you very much, President Alex Padilla. Please all rise, place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me, I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much and good morning, Mr. President, members of council. It's a great day in L.A., 10th day of August, 2004. We have a distinguished delegation that I'm going to call to come forward from our sister city of Busan, Korea, located in the beautiful country of South Korea. As you know, Busan is one of our 20 sister cities, it has a great tie. Los Angeles is the second largest Korean city in the world, if you could believe that at all, with all the great immigration that we've had to welcome people from all over, but especially from Korea. So I'm pleased to have with us this morning Youngju Kim, who is the president of the City Council for some brief remarks. Youngju?
We are members of the Los Angeles City Council. I am Chairman of the Los Angeles City Council.
They are from Korea and they are like Busan Metropolitan City Council members. Then I brought 15 people here and he is like Vice President, Mr. Youngju Kim.
We are grateful to Chairman and Chairman and citizens of China for their hospitality.
Thank you for your welcoming to us.
We are members of the Los Angeles City Council.
They are from like for 400 million people in Korea and the second largest city from Busan Metropolitan City.
Our visitors are the largest city in the world and the center of both international flights and transportation. They are responsible for the entrance and exit of the airport. They are promising a dream.
We visited Los Angeles and here is like for largest city and for transportation and then for transport like for from Pacific Ocean. And then so we are living here and here is like a very beautiful city and then it's like for we feel like a hope here.
And LA is a city where most people live. We are close to Busan. Since 1967, the 18th day of the war was fought. Today, we have a long period of close relationship.
For Busan Metropolitan City and has like for sister city with Los Angeles in 1968 December 18. And since that time, we have like very good relationship with you guys and I feel like very, very good and friendly here.
We are looking at the development of Busan as a destination for the sea.
So we using like for this experience and our like city, Busan Metropolitan, and we try to make like our city for more in the biggest city in Korea. So we try to like develop our city with this experience.
We are looking at what the citizens are doing for the city council members doing for like for L.A. city peoples and working with and for them and then for like agenda and do you guys like working together today? So then they wanted to learn about this and they wanted to run about this system. Despite the busy, we are grateful to Chairman and Chairman and citizens of China.
Thanks again and invite us in this council meeting and for sharing the time for us and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. President Kim, on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, we say, "Hadiyo seo chingu." Okay, and we see you in Busan. Mr. President, thank you very much for this opportunity. We're going to present you the formal document of the certificate of welcome to all this delegation. We salute you here today. Thank you. Come, Samida, Alex. Come, Samida.
Come, Samida.
Good.
And for our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Perry.
And so I would like to introduce Gail Yuki Naito, who is a princess. Gail? Take that, thank you. Let's give her a hand. And our next princess is Heather Akemi Nakano. Next princess Jill Hiromi Iragashi. And Ms. Tomodachi, which I believe is Ms. Congeniality or the person who's, you know, really holds the team together, is that right? Okay, or the court, I'm sorry. Ms. Tomodachi Jenna Harumi Iwata.
Gina.
Gina? And then our first princess Crystal Aiko Fukumoto. And then our 2004 Nisei Week queen Nikki Michie Kodama. And I'd like to ask our queen to say a few moments. And I also like to introduce the president, and I'm not sure where she is. Come on over here. This is Michelle Isa Matsuioka, president of the Nisei Week Foundation. Let's give her a hand.
Thank you. We are just here to really show our appreciation to Councilwoman Perry, President Padilla, and the entire Los Angeles City Council for your continuing support of Nisei Week, the Japanese-American community, and the Little Tokyo area. We are just so honored to be here today and I'd like to, again, thank you. And to show our appreciation, we have these commemorative booklets and this one I'd like to present to you, Councilwoman Perry, just to thank you for your continuing support. And we also do have one for you, President Padilla, and all the council members. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You want to take the booklets along and move on the back of the pictures? Okay, good.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grul Han, Labange, Ladlo Miskowski, Parks, Perry Reyes Smith, Vierigosa Weissland, Padilla, 14 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is now officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ladlo moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's go through the agenda and dispense with consent items and then return to public comment.
The first items on the agenda, items 1, 2, and 3 are items noticed for public hearing. Their ordinances confirming assessments for street lighting districts.
Okay, members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearing is open and closed. Request for specials, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those three items are approved.
Next items, items 4, 5, 6, and 7 are also street lighting districts and council should continue the hearings and the ordinances to September 7th.
And again, members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and without objection, continue to September 7th. Next items, please.
Item number 8 is also a public hearing item. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity. It's in Council District 3 and the recommendation would be to deny without prejudice.
Okay, Ms. Zine moves. I do not have speaker cards on item 8. Public hearing is open and closed. Any further discussion or request to call this item special, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items 9 through 36. There are commissioners, items 9 through 16. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all commission confirmation items on the desk. Leaving items 17 through 36, members, I do not have, well, actually, these items have had public hearing in committee with committee reports with recommendations. A motion from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearing. Do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Garcetti?
Item 36, please.
36, call special by Mr. Garcetti. Other specials, 17 through 36, seeing none. Okay, let's hold item 35 on the desk by request of the city attorney. Ms. Zine calls 29 special. And on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have not been held, item 37 through 104. 10 votes are required for consideration and there are commissioners 37 through 47.
Members, items 37 through 104 now before us and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Items 37 through 47 are commission and staff confirmations. Let's hold those on the desk. Mr. Labange, I believe, calls item 102 special. Ms. Han?
Let's call 103 special, please.
And Mr. President, if it's possible, 102, out of order, please.
One step ahead of you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, so item 102 and 103, call special. Any other specials on these items, seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 105 and 106 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, members, items 105 and 106 now before us and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearing is open and closed. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, item number 106, special for Councilmember Parks.
Okay, item 106, call special as we await Mr. Parks's arrival. Item 105 still before us, Ms. Grul.
I'm not sure if I missed this. I apologize. Item 56, we wanted to continue for one week.
Okay, we'll reconsider that in just a second.
Thank you.
Item 105 now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Ms. Grul moves reconsideration of item 56. Let's open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, item 56 reconsidered and continued, Ms. Grul, for one week. Okay, the new hearing date is August 17th. All right, I believe that is it for consent items. Members of the council, it's a busy morning. We have 20-some-odd commissioners to consider confirming this morning. We have requests to take item 102 out of order, item 36 out of order, and it's our general practice to take public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So let's take care of general public comment first and the council will hear from Theo and Nico Milonopoulos and then we'll come back to, I believe, commissioner confirmations and then our two items out of order. So your focus and brevity this morning is appreciated. Go ahead.
We are Nico and Theo Milonopoulos, 17-year-old gun control activist and co-founders of Kids Voice L.A.
Long before September 11th, L.A. had its own terrorist attack five years ago today, August 10th, when a madman wielding an assault weapon burst into the North Valley Jewish Community Center, gunned down innocent children, and took the life of innocent postal worker Joseph Iletto.
It was also five years ago that the proposal to ban the sale of all gun ammunition in the city was introduced on behalf of our city's children. But unfortunately today, it is still unacted upon in the city's Public Safety Committee.
The world is a far different place than it had been five years ago. In the past five years, over 200 of your city's children have been killed, including most recently two young men who are working to better their communities through a graffiti removal program at Homeboy Industries. And as we remember, back on that day of terror, we hope to look forward and look toward you today to take action.
We are counting on you, our city leaders, to take a stand and leadership on the issue of gun violence that has mercilessly slaughtered our city's children.
There is no excuse. You have it in your power to save the lives of your city's children. We beg you to pull the initiative to ban the sale of all gun ammunition in the city out of the Public Safety Committee for a vote so that you can stop the killing of kids in your city.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. And colleagues, again, unless there's an objection, let's go through and consider the council, excuse me, the commissioner nominees submitted by the mayor for our consideration in batches, Madam Clerk, if we can. I believe we have, for example, three from the Human Relations Commission, item 11, 13, and 14 that we can consider together.
And I believe on item number 13, Ms. Lorraine Bradley, she is not being able to be here today.
Okay, but item 13 is still before us. Mr. Bartonetti can come forward. Ms. Bradley's not here. And Dr. Jackson, if you can come forward at this time.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Is, are we going to move forward with 13 or can we speak on that at this point?
It's going to be before us at this point. So it's up to the council whether or not you want to continue. But as far as I think we're concerned, at this point, it is before us.
All right, let me, colleagues, I just wanted to make an announcement here. I'm going to rise in support of the renomination of Ms. Bradley. Colleagues, it's a difficult time in the Bradley family. I would like to just ask that everybody extend their prayers. Ethel Bradley has been hospitalized in critical condition and she is bedside, Lorraine Bradley is bedside with her mother right now. So as somebody who has given this city much in the way of leadership for many, many years, standing as the first lady of Los Angeles, I know that last night, the family made a number of phone calls. Some of you may have received those phone calls. She is not able to be here today as she's tending to her mother, but I would hope that everybody would take just a moment, give whatever type of prayer and support that you can to Ms. Ethel Bradley, who is struggling at this moment to recover from serious, serious illness. So rise in support of Lorraine Bradley's appointment, reappointment. She could not be here and hopefully we all will understand and extend our best wishes to the Bradley family.
Thank you, Mr. Ladlo. We recognize Mr. Zine for items 11, 13, and 14.
I just had a comment regarding the appearance of Ms. Bradley. She was not able to make it to the committee, but I know she's been a longstanding commissioner, so I would agree with the endorsement and support for her reappointment to the Human Relations Commission.
Mr. Cardenas?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to tell my friend, Mr. Bartonetti, we certainly appreciate all the work that you've been doing for the many, many years, volunteering your time on various commissions, and we look forward to your continued commitment. And I just want to say, on behalf of all Angelinos, we thank you for your compassion and we thank you for bringing your knowledge and your expertise to this volunteer position for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Han?
Thank you. I just wanted to rise in support of all three of these commissioners being reconfirmed and want to thank them for their ability and their willingness to serve the city on this commission and certainly our hearts and prayers, Martin, go with the Bradley family. Certainly, the Bradleys are really equivalent to public service in this city and we appreciate Lorraine's, we appreciate the fact that she's where she needs to be right now. That's what's important and we also appreciate her continued willingness to serve. Also, I just want to make a comment that Dr. Jackson is also apparently not here and she also, Dennis, appeared before our committee and we, I know that I completely want to reconfirm her ability to serve on this commission as well. We're very impressed with her credentials and her resume, so congratulations to all of you. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Ms. Grul?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bartonetti, I'm so pleased that you're here today and that you're representing your other two commissioners. I think there's no bigger time in the history of this city, the importance of human relations in this commission. And someone who participated recently in the days of dialogue in areas outside my own district, when I was asked to participate, they said, oh, well, there's one here on the west side or one that, I said, no, I want to go in areas where I can listen to communities, to hear where their problems are and to listen to how we interrelate, whether it be from the police department in the community or whether it be from individuals who look or speak different than their neighbor. We need to ensure that this Human Relations Commission is given the kind of support that I think is critical and many of you have been active in ensuring that it still exists. And I hope that you will come back to us because oftentimes we only see those commissioners when they come up for confirmation. And we stand up and say how great you are and how much we look forward to that partnership and I think I'm really serious about that, that we want to hear from you where there's a problem or an issue that we as council members can make a difference and that, in that true partnership, can improve the human relations in the city of Los Angeles. And so thank you for your willingness to serve and I also want to send my thoughts and prayers to Mrs. Bradley and to Lorraine, who are my extended family as someone who worked there. So I know that she will continue her leadership role as well in the Human Relations Commission. So thank you for your willingness. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. Are there members wishing to be heard on items 11, 13, and 14? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the city. Fourth with, please, on those three items. And I think we can take item 9, 37, 38, 39, and 41 together. That's a combination of library, disability, cultural affairs, El Pueblo, and zoo. If you all, you know who you are, come forward. 9, 37, 38, 39, and 41 for the clerk.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise in support of all three of these commissioners being reconfirmed, and want to thank them for their ability and their willingness to serve the city on this commission, and certainly our hearts and prayers, Martin, go with the Bradley family. Certainly, the Bradleys are really equivalent to public service in this city, and we appreciate Lorraine's, we appreciate the fact that she's where she needs to be right now. That's what's important, and we also appreciate her continued willingness to serve. Also, I just want to make a comment that Dr. Jackson is also apparently not here, and she also, Dennis, appeared before our committee, and we, I know that I completely want to reconfirm her ability to serve on this commission as well. We're very impressed with her credentials and her resume. So, congratulations to all of you. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bartonetti, I'm so pleased that you're here today and that you're representing your other two commissioners. I think there's no bigger time in the history of this city, the importance of human relations in this commission. And someone who participated recently in the days of dialogue in areas outside my own district, when I was asked to participate, they said, oh, well, there's one here on the west side, or one that, I said, no, I want to go in areas where I can listen to communities, to hear where their problems are, and to listen to how we interrelate, whether it be from the police department in the community, or whether it be from individuals who look or speak different than their neighbor. We need to ensure that this Human Relations Commission is given the kind of support that I think is critical, and many of you have been active in ensuring that it still exists. And I hope that you will come back to us, because oftentimes we only see those commissioners when they come up for confirmation. And we stand up and say how great you are and how much we look forward to that partnership, and I think I'm really serious about that, that we want to hear from you where there's a problem or an issue that we, as council members, can make a difference, and that, and that true partnership can improve the human relations in the city of Los Angeles. And so, thank you for your willingness to serve, and I also want to send my thoughts and prayers to, to Mrs. Bradley and to Lorraine, who are my extended family as, as someone who worked there. So, I know that she will continue her leadership role as well in the Human Relations Commission. So, thank you for your willingness. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruehl. Other members wishing to be heard on items eleven, thirteen, and fourteen? Seeing none, let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the city. Forthwith, please, on those three items. And I think we can take item nine, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-one together. That's a combination of library, disability, cultural affairs, El Pueblo, and zoo. If you all, you know who you are, come forward. Nine, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-one. For the clerk. Okay, again, members, we have commission nominees before us for confirmation, members wishing to be heard. If not, we can make it easy on them.
I want to make it real easy on them, but just, you're so dedicated in serving for the city. Just say your, your name and your passion, okay?
Karen Winnick, the zoo and all of its wonderful animals.
I love that.
Delilis Lotello with O'Vera Street, and I love the city of L.A.
Paula Holt, Cultural Affairs Commission, and my passions for the fine and performing arts.
Carrie Lopez, Library Commission, passion, family, city, service, thanks.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous vote on all four of these great passionate commissioners.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations, and thank you all. Let's next go to items forty and forty-two. We have two commission nominees for the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families, forty and forty-two. That's Dr. Kimbrough and Dr. McCroskey. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise in support of the lady I had asked to do this, and I'm, I haven't been disappointed. She's got an incredible wealth of experience and an open and compassionate heart, and a deep, deep commitment to bettering the lives of children and, and their families. And I'm looking forward to great things coming out of this commission.
So, thank you, Ms. Perry. Other members wishing to be heard on items forty and forty-two? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the city. Madam Clerk and members of the council, all commission confirmation today are going forthwith. I believe we can next jump to items forty-five and forty-six, to Convention and Visitors Bureau commission nominees. Please welcome to the center table, Mr. Ken Simons and Mr. Pecklar Blavjean. Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. President, I rise to support Mr. Simon, good resident of the twelfth district, and when I met him last year, we talked about this, he has a real passion for the convention center, making it work efficiently, and certainly, we have our problems there to make it work, but I think we have a solution coming with our new hotel, and I know Ken's going to be a very strong supporter of getting that convention center back on the profitable side and making it work. So, I rise to support his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Other members wishing to be heard on these two commission nominees. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service as well. That was items forty-five and forty-six. Next, let's take up items ten and forty-four together. That is a harbor commission appointment and an airport commission appointment, Mr. Stanley, along with Ms. Kokel.
And I believe on item number ten, the report has been submitted or is in the process of being submitted.
Okay. Members, items ten and forty-four now before us, two proprietary commissions. Are there any questions or comments for members of the council? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we have some public comment on the reappointment of Camila Cosell. I don't know if you wanted to take that, she's not listening. Well, you know what, then I'll just, I'll ask you a few questions, Camila. I certainly stand in complete, you know, approval and enthusiastically support your reconfirmation as a member of the Harbor Commission. As we talked about in committee, you know, our city charter mandates that one member of the Harbor Commission come from the local area, but this mayor went beyond that and actually appointed three of you that live in the Harbor area. And when you came into office, so to speak, there was what was described as a hundred-year war between the community and the Port of Los Angeles. What difference do you think it has made that we have three local commissioners, and what part do you think you've played in really helping to bring both of those entities together, the port and the community?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn. It's, it's made an incredible difference. Having people live in the community here or experiencing on a daily basis the impacts that the port has on the community makes us very real representatives. And when we talk about the negative impacts of port development on the environment and on traffic and air quality and blight and environmental justice and all of those, we have credibility because we're living them along with the rest of the community. And I've been very honored and I'm very grateful to Mayor Hahn and to the city council for giving me the first three years. The mayor asked me specifically to establish a Port Community Advisory Committee, which is the first time ever that the port has had such an entity. And this committee is a standing committee of the board and has all the stakeholders represented now and have a formal process for the voice of the community to be heard. And we're very proud of this effort. It hasn't been easy. There's still a lot of controversy. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but the important thing is that a process is in place now for the community and the port to work together to see that the mayor's vision is implemented, the vision of growth, yet balancing that with negative impacts on the environment and the community.
You know, I'm not going to ask you all those questions that I asked in committee because we went rather long, but I do, I do think one of the issues that I think is particularly important as we go forward is what you just said. I mean, we need to achieve a balance between this incredible economic engine of this region and healthy neighborhoods. And I don't think we need to make the choice between good business and clean air, and you and I attended the groundbreaking yesterday of yet another major container ship that will be plugging in to our DWP electricity grid when at birth, which will save tons of emissions that float in the air. The mayor has said no new net increase of emissions at our harbor, and yet, we're projected to grow, we're, we're projected to triple our growth at this port complex in the next twenty years. How do you see the commission's responsibility in really leading this effort, and how do you think the port's efforts are so far at really growing while reducing the air emissions that not only pollute the Harbor area, but as we know now, really pollute all of the L.A. basin? So, how are we going to achieve that no net increase of emissions?
Of course, that's not an easy question with an easy answer, but it's part of our challenge, and we are working on it. We are the first port in the world to have electric, the AMP ships, where the ships plug into electric power while they're in port. We have two ships now. Our first one was China Shipping, and our second one was yesterday, N.Y.K. And, you know, I think sometimes when we look at the big picture of the city of Los Angeles, and I love, I was born and raised in Hollywood, and I'm a Los Angeles girl that ended up in San Pedro twenty-three years ago, but we think, oftentimes, you think, oh, that's the port, they're down there, and the rest of the city, we're over here. But the impacts of the port on this city are incredible, not only in the amount of jobs, the economy that it boosts for us, but also on some of the negative impacts, and the air emissions, and the traffic congestion, and the infrastructure issues are hitting all over the Los Angeles basin now. There will be a lot of ways, and one of them is where we are not doing the environmental impacts in the same reports the way we used to. We are really defining projects at the beginning of the reports to make sure that projects are designed so that when they do happen, the environmental impacts will be negated or minimized, and if they need to be mitigated, they will be mitigated for. So, we're starting at the beginning of the process instead of waiting until the end.
And of course, as you mentioned in committee, the new leasing policy that we're putting in place, we're no longer going to lease property to tenants at the port just on the bottom line financially, on what that will get in revenue, but also, we're going to be looking at criteria such as who can provide green technology at their terminal and with their ships. So, I think that's important.
That's correct. In fact, we actually have an RFP out now for our, the one terminal vacancy, and we have four major shipping companies applying, and one of the major criteria will be how they are going to address environmental issues.
Thank you. Mr. President, I was mentioning earlier, I don't think you were listening, that I believe we have public comment on this item, and I don't know if I need to reopen or make a motion to reopen public comment.
Public hearing has been held in committee. A motion from the floor is required to reopen the public hearing.
Some of.
To reopen the public hearing on this item. Okay, members, let's, at this point in time, take a vote on reopening the public hearing. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, and we do have a couple of speaker cards on item number ten, and I also have Mr. Labonge, Ms. Gruehl, and Ms. Misakowski waiting to be heard on these commission nominees. Ken Melendez, will you please come forward, James Cross, and Jamie Wilson. Please form a line behind the podium. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name's Ken Melendez. I'm a member of the Port Community Advisory Committee. I'm also chair of the Wilmington Waterfront Subcommittee, and I want to say that please give Camila another five years. She's a tremendous asset to the city of Los Angeles, to the port, and to the communities that surround it, and she has the patience of Job doing, dealing with the Port Community Advisory Committee. It's not an easy thing, but she does a tremendous job. She doesn't miss meetings, and she's a tremendous asset to this city. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is James Cross, and I'm here to lend my enthusiastic support to the reappointment, reappointment of Camila Cosell as Harbor Commissioner. This is a woman who has taken a volunteer position and turned it into more than a full-time job. She, she perhaps knows more than any commissioner that we've ever had at the Harbor Department, and has, has brought a sense of, a sense of change and the spirit, an uplifting spirit to everything that's accomplished there. And she's responsible primarily for helping the PCAC with its interface with the Harbor Department, but her duties and responsibilities and don't stop there. She's involved in everything they do, and the city could do, use a whole lot more commissioners like Commissioner Cosell.
Good morning, President Padilla, council members, Councilwoman Hahn. I'm Jamie Wilson, 390 West Seventh Street, San Pedro. Three years ago, Mayor Hahn did a couple of very important things. One, he appointed Commissioner Cosell to the Harbor Commission, and the second thing he did is he established the Port Community Advisory Committee. The Port Community Advisory Committee, which we call PCAC, represents the various communities in San Pedro, the business community, the labor community, the residential community, and the neighborhood councils. And Commissioner Cosell has been the chair of that body for the last three years, and probably spends twenty to thirty hours a week working on the efforts for the Port of Los Angeles. In the last year, I've been, was elected co-chair of the Port Community Advisory Body, and now Commissioner Cosell has me working thirty hours a week trying to make things better in the port. I wholeheartedly support Commissioner Cosell. Ask for you to support a redomination for the next five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It once again concludes public comment on these items. I now recognize Mr. Labonge. To the microphone, please.
Great appointment, Ms. Cosell. Thank you so much. Members of the council, she has a great background in education, but the most important background in education is adult education, and your tenacity about community, engaging people, and uplifting people is so important. And I'm very pleased that you presented each of us an update on the bridge to the, to the breakwater, which is so important. Bring us back to the water, Commissioner, and then follow the lead of the mayor and, and Janice Hahn on making that port as, as environmentally cohesive as possible. Yesterday, I, I have a confession, Mr. President. I was southbound on the Long Beach Freeway around three-thirty. I won't tell you where I ended up, but I could tell you this. I could walk on the tops of trucks going up the Long Beach Freeway, walk on the tops of trucks. There was nothing but trucks coming out of the ports. And I also want to have a challenge to work with Union Pacific to get that Alameda Quarter higher capacity. So, that would be good. This is a great appointment of the mayor, and I strongly support it. And Mr. Stanley, thank you for your service, all the way, all the way through. We're going to go up around the 405 and stop at the airport right now. My dream, my dream is to see the green line into the airport, and I think that's real important. I could do an instant poll right here. How many people want the green line into the airport? Raise your hand. And that's very important, as we redo that and bring the consensus plan, and I compliment Ms. Misakowski and working with the mayor for that. But transit is so important because they got to get people off that 405, and bring people in and make it an international airport that serves this city well. So, I thank you for your service and dedication, both of you. Excellent appointments. Ask for an eye vote for everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to rise in support of Camila Cosell and recognize, yes, Tom, she has been involved in education for a very, very long time, and we met when we created L.A.'s Best. And so, she takes part of that credit for getting through the bureaucracy at L.A. USD and then going to adult education, and has been a tremendous commissioner. And Ms. Hahn would just tell me about the new charter school that you're helping that's connected with the Harbor Department, and appreciate your leadership on that. And as, as mayor of San Pedro, your honorary mayor, I know you were for a few years, you really have had, at the heart, I think, of your passion is to, to take care of that community in San Pedro, as well as manage one of our largest departments in the city. And my only comment, as well as to support you, is that we've gone through a lot lately in talking about the relationship between proprietary departments and, and city as a whole, and city council. And I just would ask, as you go forward, and there's going to be a lot of discussion in the near future about that relationship and being held accountable, being a business, but at the same time, being held to the same types of standards that we have our other city departments. And as I say frequently, when someone arrives at the Port of Los Angeles, or arrives at LAX, or gets their water bill, they don't separate and say, oh, that's a proprietary department of the city of Los Angeles. They think that's part of the city of Los Angeles. And as you and Jerome and the airport talk about these things, I want you to have that, those kinds of glasses on, saying, we are part of the city, we're going to be held to the same standards, we're going to make sure we get the best bang for our buck, but that we have some accountability. And so, I know that as the Harbor Department is considering, and through the audit, we worked with the department to ensure that some of those changes are being made that bring them up to that same level that we feel is, is critical in the city. So, thank you for your willingness to continue to serve and, and look forward to coming to the school when it's established.
Thank you.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to direct my remarks to Mr. Stanley, who I think was here a few short weeks ago when we confirmed you at the end of June for a term that expired on, on June thirtieth, and we knew then that you were being reappointed. I'd like to ask you, in your first impressions, your first month there as an airport commissioner, particularly that, who is one who is representing the valley and the Van Nuys Airport issues, what you've come, in a short term there, to look at in terms of focusing on, and essentially just your first impressions of having been there for about a month and a half?
Well, I'm very impressed with the concern of the individuals who feel as stakeholders in all the airports in Lawa. Last Monday, I sat in the back of a meeting at the Van Nuys Airport, the Van Nuys Citizens Aviation Advisory Committee, and they didn't know I was there. So, I sat in the back the whole time and just watched the process work, and I must have seen fifty people who were very passionate about the impact of Lawa and their community, and, and the impact of Lawa and the greater Los Angeles area. That made me feel good about what I was doing, and, and helped reignite my passion toward doing a good job, because it's that important to them, and it's that important to the city of Los Angeles.
I appreciate it, and I hope that your next meeting, you will go up and introduce yourself to them and actually get involved yourself with the dialogue with them. They are a very lively group, as I'm sure you saw with having some fifty people there. I mean, interestingly, as you point that out, the airport commission itself doesn't have fifty people attending it most often. So, to have that many people attending a citizens advisory committee in the Van Nuys community about the Van Nuys Airport really does show you the focus, the concern, and what grassroots empowerment is really all about. So, I appreciate your looking over the lay of the land, first impressions, to then go in and roll up your sleeves and work with them to help bring some of their ideas to the fore.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to add that the staff has been extremely helpful and supportive in my assimilation into this process, and I know I wouldn't be where I am without the, without the, the passion of the staff.
Well, I think today, we're looking forward to confirming you for the next five years, so hopefully you'll be able to get a lot more experience, and hopefully, as you know, we spent an awful lot of time here talking about the master plan at L.A. World Airports, but you and I both know but you and I both know there is a master plan for the Van Nuys Airport that has been kicking around for at least as much time, and I think is just as important in that community. So hopefully, we can get both of them accomplished within the next year, and look to you to carry the load of the Van Nuys Airport on your shoulders, and getting, making sure the commission brings that forward and gets it to the council.
Thank you very much, look forward to it.
Mr. Carradines.
Yes, thank you very much. Two commissioners are before us who are, have been dedicating their time to us for quite some time, and I just want to reiterate something that we talked about before, Jerome Stanley, on when it comes to the Van Nuys Airport. And thank you very much for sitting in on that meeting and learning more and more about the nuances, and how special the community of Van Nuys and the surrounding community is. But one of the things that frustrates both the community and also us policymakers is that we don't like the fact that the busiest general aviation airport in the country, Lawa, is saying is being operated at a deficit. And in my opinion, one of the reasons why that possibly is in fact the case is because we have not renewed the leases there. And both the tenants and potential future tenants are eager to get that underway, and once we do do that, we won't have to be listening to the idea that the busiest general aviation airport in the country can and is in fact being operated as a deficit. How much time do you think you're gonna be able to dedicate to make sure that we get Lawa to work with the community, to get those contracts in order, and also to get the proper revenue generated out of that community, so that we can no longer have to say that it's being treated kind of like a stepchild?
One of the things I've learned in my short time there is that although renewing the leases is very important, the partnership is even more important. So whereas renewing the leases and revenues in a normal business situation may be the number one consideration, to me, the number one consideration is building a coalition and a partnership, so that those stakeholders feel that the renewal of the leases are being done in the best interest of everyone involved. I do believe that may have an effect on the speed of things, and last month, we had a meeting in Van Nuys, and there was a proposal to renew a lease, and it created quite a bit of controversy. And so I've also seen that the speed is important, but getting it right is even more important, and making sure that the stakeholders are our partners in this process, and that they have a chance to weigh in, because the community is extremely important in the Van Nuys Airport equation.
I agree with you. Patience is important, but diligence and getting it right, making sure that the quality of that relationship is in fact moving forward appropriately, is paramount. And also, one more question, from where you live in the Valley, can you sometimes hear some of the activities, some of the jets or airplanes taking off and landing at Van Nuys Airport?
All the time.
You can all the time?
All the time.
That's the answer I wanted to hear. Keep that into perspective, that's what the community needs you for on that commission, and we thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to have a couple of questions, Mr. Stanley. One of the things that, as a representative of the 8th District, that we're most concerned with is that it appears when we're dealing with airport issues, we hear a great deal about El Segundo, we hear a great deal about Westchester, a little bit about Inglewood, and then not much of anything east of Inglewood. And what we're concerned with is, we had a community meeting, or community group, that put forth a fairly extensive report on the EIR process, and the community really did not get a great deal of satisfaction or response on it. And then most recently, we determined that there is a group being, that they're discussing a community benefit package with a group of organizations, again, that are not represented in the 8th or 9th District, which is primarily the flight path. And we're just concerned that as we continue through this process, that the residents that live under the flight path are the ones that continue to be ignored, and that the real attention is only those that are on the borders of the airport. And I would just like to get some commitment from you, that we will begin to expand that discussion, and begin to expand our outreach, because many of the people that live in the 8th District are still struggling with sound issues, and they're aware that the chart that was used to determine the sound ratios back in 92 were an error, and they're still using them as a guide as to who gets soundproofing even today. And so those are the things I want to just throw out quickly, and see as a member of that commission, that you can begin to get staff and others to begin to look further east and realize the thousands of city residents that live under the flight path that really have had no voice in this whole issue over these last several years.
Thank you very much, Councilman, for the question. Having grown up in and around the 8th District, including my time at USC, I can say that without a doubt that the FAA-drawn noise circle that they've done does not fully contain all the, the sound impact of airports in the community, and yes, it is true that it does impact the 8th District. I am committed to making sure that LAX reaches out and engages all of its stakeholders, all of its partners, not just those that are most active and most vocal because they have a greater access to the system, but especially those that are impacted and may not have as strong a voice.
Thank you. And also, if, as we're looking at mitigations, if we understand what's occurred recently, that most everyone that gets the airport uses surface streets. That means our Manchester, Century, Florence, and Slauson avenues are primarily the thoroughfares. There's little or no discussion about mitigation on those major thoroughfares as it relates to those communities, and how it will impact our schools, hospitals, and churches. So we'd just like to expand the discussion, and to bring about that awareness that we've not been able to really get that sensitivity as of yet.
Sure. I think that one of the problems, and I think the master plan seeks to address that, is the fact that the 405 and the airport are not connected, and I believe that, although I know that there is a phased-in process going on, I think that's one of the goals of the master plan, to make sure that those surface streets don't continue to have that kind of adverse impact as a result of being the main thoroughfares leading to LAX.
Thank you.
Mr. Dudlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stanley, good afternoon, or good morning, I know it's already been a long, long morning. First, I just wanted to rise and say thank you for your continued support, volunteer time, and work that you do for the city of LA. And a number of people that are aware of your reappointment have contacted me and support, and those are key, key community leaders in my own district. One of the things that has constantly come to me, as I get around and meet with some of the businesses and business owners in communities of color, is they're feeling quite challenged to access the contract opportunities at, at the airport, and wanted to hear your thoughts. I know you've got some ideas on how in a post-209 era, we as a city begin to extend and spread the, spread the wealth around to all contractors throughout Los Angeles. And I know that recently, it was said that we didn't realize how strong of a society we could be until there was an open playing field, and everybody in society could compete. How do you look at things that could be done at, under your commission, to try to open the door more, and give women contractors and contractors of color the impression that there is an open-door policy, and it's an equal playing field?
Well, I think one of the keys is the free flow of information. I understand that, I've come to learn that there's a process of publication for RFPs, contracts, and leases, but a lot of times, the, that information is still not accessible, or how to take it from learning to becoming part of the process, and I am firmly committed to trying to help bridge that gap, so that the people that do business with LA look like the people that live in Los Angeles.
And if you look at where we are now, and again with the post-209, do you see anything coming up on the horizon, under the commission's sort of authority, where there are proactive efforts that are within the confines of existing law, that can actually make our efforts a little more aggressive, to make sure that, that there's ironclad proof that the field is open and equitable?
You know, I can, I can only speak to what my intention is as I move forward. I don't know enough about the process to be able to identify that specifically, but as I move forward, it is, it is something I feel I'm personally charged with making sure happens.
All right. With that commitment and guarantee, I look forward to another term with you, and I wish you lots of luck. It's a difficult position to be in. We appreciate what it takes to be in that seat, and you're wearing it well, so continue the job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Other members wishing to be heard on these two commission nominees? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Unanimous approval. Congratulations, and thank you as well for serving the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, members, let's go to items 47 and 15. 47 is a nominee for the Police Commission, Karina Alarcon, and item 15 is nomination of Mr. Jean Kim to the Police Permit Review Panel. Items 47 and 15, we have members wishing to be heard on these items. 47 and 15, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next, we can go to items 12, 12 and 16. Item 12 is a Board of Neighborhood Empowerment Commission, and 16 is a reappointment of Cynthia Ruiz to the Board of Public Works. Item 12, reappointment of Ronald Mark Stone to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly rise in support of both of these commissioners being reconfirmed to their position. Cynthia has been an incredible resource to my office, as I know to many council offices in terms of really trying to connect neighborhoods with public works, done an outstanding job in that.
Thank you.
I really am very enthusiastic about your appointment and your reappointment. Ron, I feel the same way about you, but one of the things you might want to speak to is something that I brought up in committee, which is, obviously, in my committee of education neighborhoods, we hear it all about neighborhood councils. We hear the ones that are working, we hear the ones that are not working, we hear the frustrations, we hear the anger, we hear those that some people have thrown in the towel and don't want to have anything more to do with neighborhood councils, and then we hear the successes. And while certainly, we're up to, I think, 90-something councils having been certified, what are we at?
Actually, 81.
81, okay. And that's quite an impressive list of neighborhood councils to be certified since we began this process a couple of years ago. And you admitted that the commission has really been focusing on certification, which has been an enormous process. But one of the things I said was, one of my frustrations was, I really have looked to the commission, the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, to really make recommendations, certainly back to me and my committee, and to this full city council, on what lessons we've learned, where might we be going in the future, and certainly, you're also on the front lines of hearing from neighborhood councils. And I am hoping for more of a, maybe a global perspective from the Board of Commissioners on making some real solid recommendations on how we might avoid some of these frustrations in the future, what we might tweak that really will make this process more effective in the long run. And more effective being the original mission of neighborhood councils, which was to be involved in our process of government down here at City Hall. So you might just comment on how you're thinking about that.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hahn, and you're correct, the last few years have been very labor-intensive from our commission standpoint, in terms of certifying neighborhood councils, getting them up and running. Now that most are up and running, we are looking at more global policy issues. One of the first ones that is coming before our commission soon, and will be coming before your council, is the idea of standardized election procedures. We've seen so many of the problems come up in the election procedures. So a group of neighborhood councils, it hasn't been led by our department, hasn't been led by the city council, neighborhood councils have come together to draft election procedures. One of the things we talked about at your committee a couple of weeks ago was the idea of holding a joint hearing between our commission and the Education Neighborhoods Committee to elicit those suggestions from neighborhood councils on ways we can tweak the system, improve the system. There are areas, the Public Records Act, how that applies to neighborhood councils, the Brown Act, how that applies, things like that we need to take a look at. Also, I'm joined here by Ms. Ruiz from the Public Works Commission. One of the things we need to look at is how other city departments, like Public Works, Public Works has already stepped up to the plate, negotiated memorandums of understandings with neighborhood councils, and they should be commended for that, and we need to look elsewhere in the city to find out ways to partner with neighborhood councils.
Thank you, and I wholeheartedly support both of these commission reappointments, and I urge my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very pleased to stand in support of Cynthia Ruiz, who I've had the pleasure of working with for a short time now, but I was so impressed with her when she came to me as Public Works Chairman, and explained that she didn't know everything about Public Works, but wanted to learn. More important, she understood the importance of Public Works to the community as an activist in the neighborhood council, and so I think it's appropriate that you're both sitting there today. And she was an activist in neighborhood councils, and did understand, and went out and learned real fast what Public Works did. I've seen her at everything around the city, she's doing a magnificent job, and from everything I hear from the department personnel, as well as the people out there in the neighborhood councils, you're a real pleasure to work with and have on our team, and you're doing great things over there. So thank you, and I rise in support of both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dudlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise in support of, I'm most familiar with Cynthia, and I just wanted to say that it's been a real honor to see you working in the city of LA. Those of you that don't recall, Ms. Ruiz gave up a very thriving, good thriving business that she started, and one that her family has continued to run, and she gave that up for public service. My sources tell me it was a pretty significant pay cut, but her spirit is still alive and wanted to give herself to public service, and so, and it's, yeah, believe that or not. Continuing, that was Eric Garcetti making a crack, I just want, for the record. But I did want to say that I hope that you're getting the support that you need from, from the mayor's office, and from other commissioners, and I know that the staff and line employees in the department continue to speak highly of you, and as I'm learning more and more on this job, to really move Public Works, we've got to have the buy-in and the support, not only from neighborhood councils and community groups, but also from the line employees that actually deliver the services. So I look forward to another term, and I'm glad that you actually said you wanted another term. I asked you just a few minutes ago, you sure you want this job again? You said absolutely, so I'm looking forward to another term with you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to, want to thank both of our candidates for their time and their hard work. Mrs. Stone, I just, one question that I have for you, and that I've been asking about the resources needed from the Planning Department to deal with a lot of the neighborhood issues that you engage in as commissioner on this board. From your point of view, the planning aspect, the planning element of what we are engaging at the neighborhood level, are there any other resources or any other recommendations you might have? Because I've been told that there's not, you know, support. On the other hand, the department is saying, our employees are burning out, are working all hours, they're stretched out very thin, support systems aren't there. What is your opinion?
Thank you, Councilman Reyes. Very good question, good point. I know, I had mentioned before that Public Works has stepped to the plate to partner with neighborhood councils. The Planning Department, from what I understand, was also one of those early departments that did reach out. I think the most important area that the Planning Department can reach out to neighborhood councils, because so many of the issues that neighborhood councils care about are planning and zoning issues, would be to do everything possible to get early information out to neighborhood councils about a particular development, a plan, something that is going to occur in that neighborhood council area. I think that that takes probably a little additional resources, maybe additional staff time, but maybe just thinking about things in a little different, different way. Instead of trying to keep things inside City Hall, get it out to the neighborhood groups.
Agreed. I just want to take this time to thank Mr. Ruiz for her hard work. We've been taking on a very ambitious program in the revitalization of San Andres River, hoping in the next few weeks, we'll have an announcement of our revitalization plan and the funding of that. But again, I appreciate the opportunity to look at this whole process from the point of view of where we get away from the factory end of the pipeline mindset, and being creative and dealing with natural strategies, if you will, and how we deal with cleaning up our riverway. riverways, which in the end ends up cleaning up our beaches. So thanks so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stone, Cynthia Ruiz. The West Hills Neighborhood Council, major problem occurred. In fact, I'm just reading one of my emails from Julie Butcher, SEIU, regarding scholarship or savings bonds for a contest that they had for the local students. Those problems, we need to get resolved. I know we're bringing it before a hearing. And what I ask as a commissioner on that very, very important commission that Councilwoman Hahn and I and others helped put together on the charter, is that the neighborhood councils not have the blockage, not have the bureaucracy, not have all the impediments. And I received a notification yesterday that the current president of the West Hills Neighborhood Council is stepping down. That's the same neighborhood council that wanted to dissolve, and then now the president, due to personal reasons, is stepping down. The far west San Fernando Valley, the far east Los Angeles, south Los Angeles, whatever the case may be, those neighborhood councils are really trying to do the job. When they come up with a creative program to help inspire people to get involved, and then they're told you can't do the savings bond. You get fifty thousand dollars, but we're going to put so many restrictions that it's really not worth it. And I think that one of the homeowners associations came up, but Time Warner contacted me and said, "We'll pay for that bond." Julie Butcher, SEIU, said they'll pay for it. We should utilize the money that they're given in a proper manner, in a proper fashion, for reasonable programs. And I don't think the savings bond to the youth on the essay contest was inappropriate. So the bureaucracy is a major impediment to the neighborhood councils. The neighborhood council members are all unpaid, they have a stipend, not a stipend, they have funds for office, for fax machines, et cetera. But we really need to support them so we don't have more of them dissolving, because we worked so hard to create them. And I know that Greg Nelson, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, they tried to do it, but there's so much bureaucracy and red tape and impediments that they throw their hands up and say it's not worth it. So keep that in mind as a member of that very, very important commission. We brought that around, neighborhood councils, to go to grassroots, to help the people understand. They don't want to travel downtown City Hall, they want to work within their community. So just keep that in mind when you're coming up with those decisions. And somehow we have to break out of that barricade, break out of that bubble, and create some innovative programs that help them instead of hindering them in what they're trying to do. Now that's the three minutes for you. Now one and a half minutes for Public Works.
How about twenty seconds, Mr. Reyes?
Keep paving those streets. I travel out in the West Valley, I know we've got street paving, and my compliments to the crews who are out there at a hundred-degree temperature repaving the streets out in the far west valley, they're doing the trimming trees, fixing sidewalks, all the Public Works people are doing a great job. I know you're the representative for my district, and I appreciate all the cooperation we get from you as a commissioner and all the fine representatives of Public Works. They are making a difference in the city of Los Angeles, and I can tell you, definitely they're making a difference in the southwest San Fernando Valley. So both of you, congratulations, and you got my complete total support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I want to thank everybody who's been so patient out in the audience. I know there's a couple of big items that are here, and I really appreciate, especially the folks that are here on the Supercenter ordinance, so I will be very brief. Mr. Stone, I fully support you, and I'll leave it at that. I think you've done a great job, and I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
I just rise because Commissioner Ruiz, I wanted to say a very quick word about, has been an extraordinary commissioner. She's gone above and beyond the job description. And colleagues, Cynthia Ruiz has come out with us as we do neighborhood walks door-to-door on Saturdays, has been out there for our Untag, our Uniting Neighborhoods Targeted Against Graffiti Initiative. She is out there as much as a councilmember is, and I know how hard you all work around this horseshoe, but she is out there on Saturdays and Sundays and evening meetings. And I want to say it's just incredibly impressive, and I've been proud to work alongside with you, and I'm very glad you've been reappointed, and I look forward to another term together of doing great things in Los Angeles. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Other members wishing to be heard on items twelve and sixteen, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. And finally, that brings us to item forty-three. Members. We're almost there, we're almost there. Did you orchestrate that cheering section?
No. I want to move an item forthwith.
Which item, Mr. Garcetti?
Item twenty-six, forthwith.
Item twenty-six, forthwith, please. Okay, members, item forty-three is now before us. This is mayor's appointment of Mr. John Reamer Jr. as Director of Bureau of Contract Administration. Do we have members of the council wishing to be heard on this committee report? Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, just good luck to you. Lead the team of contract administrators who serve the public so well. They're building the public buildings that are going to last a lifetime in Los Angeles. They're working directly with the public on their driveways and simple sidewalks and all of that. It's very important to lead this great group of talented people and take up to another height. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard, seeing none. This is both the appointment itself and establishing the salary. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, do you wish to take?
Forthwith on item forty-three as well, please. So all commission appointments in item forty-three are going forthwith. Question, Madam Clerk, otherwise we're prepared to move to item one oh two.
That was my question, Mr. President.
Okay, this brings us to item one oh two. A special motion brought in by Councilmember Labonge on a matter that's of critical nature to the San Fernando Valley. I recognize Mr. Snoble is here. We also have with us, I believe, Assemblymember Lloyd Levine, who, if you watched or read the newspaper this morning, has some very special legislation pertaining to this issue as well. Let me recognize Mr. Labonge for some opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, but I'd like to defer for a moment to our Assemblyman Lloyd Levine, who traveled down for the state capitol this morning to join us at a press conference, and now has waited for this item to be called. Assemblyman, could you give us a update on the work that you're doing and how we need to support you?
Certainly. First, let me thank the council for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Thank you, Councilmember Labonge, for your work on this issue, and all of the rest of the members of the council. This is a project that is vital, and I do mean vital, to the San Fernando Valley. It has unfortunately, as you're aware, been stopped by a recent court decision. I have introduced legislation, which will be placed before the Senate tomorrow, to be acted upon in the next two weeks, that will get this project moving again. It is unfortunate, as I said earlier, that a small group of people were able to block the progress of such a vital project, but I am firmly committed to doing everything I can to make this project move forward. I appreciate the efforts of the council on the same front to get the city behind the project and get the project moving forward. I anticipate, if we run into no problems, that my legislation should not just address this problem, but any other problems that would come up in the remaining construction phase of this project. And hopefully, we can have this legislation passed and signed by the governor within the next two to three weeks, and I would be happy to answer any questions any of the council members might have.
Assemblyman Levine, thank you very much, and we're going to support you on that. We'll wait until we get the word from Legislative Council. At the desk, we have Rick Thorpe, who is the project manager. We have James Okazaki, Assistant General Manager of the Department of Transportation, and the Chief Executive Officer of the MTA, Roger Snoble. Members, the public are losing every day. They say seventy thousand dollars, I bet you it's a hundred thousand dollars if you add all the city's time, all of water and power's time, a million dollars in a week for stopping a project that's been studied for twenty years. We must get the Orange Line back working. You can see here, members, this is what stopped, right here, from North Hollywood to Warner Center, over fifteen miles, ten transit stations, to meet the needs of the transit dependent. And I'm going to ask Mr. Snoble, if you would, give us an update. Members, I have a motion that's co-chaired by Mr. Vera Gosa and myself, co-presented, but with strong support from the great councilman of the third, who's most affected by it, Mr. Zine's district, who's been a fighter to try to get this project completed and done safely. Mr. Snoble, could you please give us an update of where we are right now? What's our next steps that we have to do to get this project back working?
Okay, thank you. Council President Padilla and members of council, thank you for being here. Councilmember Labonge, thank you for the introduction, and thank you for your time today. This is a rather strange situation that we're facing ourselves with, but we did want to give you a quick status report on the San Fernando Valley Metro Orange Line Rapidway. It is a very unique project all by itself, it's got, will have international attention once it's done, and will certainly bring a lot of good service to the San Fernando Valley. As of August third, the MTA ceased construction on the three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-million-dollar project in compliance with a California appellate court stay. Currently, no activity is taking place on the project, except for limited actions that were necessary to protect the public from unfinished construction actions. The decision of the court to issue the stay is a result of an appeal by the citizens organized for smart transit, also known as COST, who after many years of MTA studies, outreach and deliberation, want more study to be conducted on the east-west bus routes in the valley. Yesterday, MTA attorneys submitted a brief to the Court of Appeals seeking immediate reversal of this ruling. That is a very extensive brief. We expect that the court will hear it, and maybe by Wednesday or Thursday, we will hear some more from the court. This project is well underway, it's over thirty-five percent completed. We just simply think it's a breach of public trust to stop work on a long-studied, greatly anticipated fourteen-mile transportation system that'll link North Hollywood to Woodland Hills and the San Fernando Valley. To give you a little bit more detail, I'd like to introduce to you our chief executive officer in charge of construction, Rick Thorpe, will give you a little audio visual, or a little visual look at the project. Rick?
Thank you, Roger. We have a very brief presentation. I know you have a long agenda today, and I'll try to keep my comments as short as possible. We have a short presentation about the Orange Line. As Councilman Labonge indicated, it's a fourteen-mile busway that will operate on an abandoned Southern Pacific Railroad right-of-way. It will start or end at North Hollywood Red Line Station and go west to Warner Center. They'll have, will have fourteen stations, six with park-and-ride, that will accommodate over thirty-seven-hundred cars for the line. We're going to be ordering special buses that will operate on the busway every seven to ten minutes. Next slide. It's somewhat ironic that we're being challenged on environmental grounds. This is probably one of the most responsible environmental projects in quite some time. We are cleaning up hazardous materials and contaminated soils over fourteen miles of the abandoned railroad right-of-way. The busway will not only include fast, clean air buses, but will also include a pedestrian and bikeway path. On top of all of this, we will be planting over five thousand new trees and over eight-hundred-thousand new plants along the right-of-way. Finally, this project is a key component to our region's air quality plan. Without it, we stand to lose millions in federal dollars. Next slide. As Roger indicated, projects over thirty-five percent complete. We've been under construction now for almost a year, and we have approximately twelve months to go when the court issued a stop order. You can see by the slide above, we're very long on some of the busway portion, and hopefully with the court lifting the stay, we will be able to resume construction immediately and get on with this important project. Next slide. As Roger mentioned, the appellate court temporarily halted construction and ordered MTA to conduct additional environmental studies. We have requested the court to allow us to resume construction, and we anticipate the court's decision later this week. Right now, the impacts, next slide, right now, the impacts, as I've mentioned, is about seventy thousand dollars a day to the taxpayers for this temporary stay, and could exceed one hundred million dollars if we have to stop the project completely for the length of time it's going to take to complete environmental studies. Over a hundred and twenty workers have already been laid off as a result of this temporary stay, and we expect, if it is continued, that there will be hundreds more that will be laid off. The current delays are putting our August of two thousand and five opening in jeopardy, and a long-term stay would delay the project for at least two years. Next slide. Next steps, we indicated MTA has filed papers in response to the recent court orders. Their disposition is expected later this week. If for some reason we are unsuccessful in our attempts to reverse these latest court decisions, MTA has agreed to appeal to the State Supreme Court. And finally, if all else fails, as Assemblyman Levine has indicated, he will be introducing state legislation that would exempt the project from any further environmental studies. Next slide. Finally, in closing, the Orange Line represents a transportation improvement project long awaited by the San Fernando Valley community. And in light of the current events, we request that this council support this project and urge the court to lift its temporary stay of construction. With that completes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Okazaki, for the Department of Transportation standpoint. We're a partner here, we have a bikeway, impacts, et cetera.
James Okazaki, Assistant General Manager from the City of L.A. DOT. We are impacted, obviously. Major impacts occurs right now as a result of the construction being halted across intersections. We have made them safe, but only temporarily. If there is a long delay, obviously, we're going to have to go back and fix some of those for longer term, but temporarily, for a month or so, they're okay the way they are. We have a punch list of things that they need to fix if indeed the stay is not lifted. I'm sorry, if the stay is lifted, hopefully, everything will be okay. In terms of the bikeway projects, you're right, also, we are impacted. This is an alternative to driving an automobile that goes all the way across the valley, fourteen miles of bikeway that MTA is building for the city. And we're very disappointed that even that part of the project is not being worked on at all.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Williams is here, behalf of Mayor Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Labonge. On behalf of the mayor, we want to stand in support of the MTA and the council's proposed position to oppose any stay to this project. It's our opinion that the valley has waited long enough for this project, and if it is not built, and if the stay is not relieved, it will increase the amount of traffic, taxpayers will stand to lose millions of dollars' worth of taxpayer funds, the environmental consequences will continue, as well as the job loss consequences, which will also continue. So we stand in support of this motion, and we're asking perhaps that the council may suggest that the city attorney take a position on this as well at some point, and whether or not they can stand with the MTA in support of this motion.
Thank you very much. Members, straightforward, the people are losing because this is not being worked on. And as I said, I bet you it's over a hundred thousand dollars a week, and soon it will be a million dollars of over three hundred dollars, not to count the DOT and water and power, plus MTA, all in total. I want to thank again Mr. Zine for his tenaciousness on the west end of the valley to try to get that built, and Mr. Vera Gosa for co-sponsoring this. Let's send a message to the Court of Appeals to remove the barrier and get people back working and build this line. Thank you very much.
Ms. Buzakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Labonge. And one, I want to thank the assembly member as well, because clearly, if as a last resort we have to break through the barrier of the court and just say that the state of California believes this is important enough to exempt it from the secret process, then so be it. I don't think we need that. I think the secret process has been fined, it was a decision at the lower court level. But I think particularly, Mr. Williams, your point was well made, and I would like to add a friendly amendment to this, that we request the city attorney to become involved as soon as possible. It may be too late to file a brief for tomorrow, if we're expecting a decision on the rehearing tomorrow, but in any case, the city attorney should be a partner with this, expressing the will of the mayor and the city council of the highest level of importance of this, and if they can bring any... And if they can bring any assistance in terms of the strategy on the legal side to help make this case strongly and as pronounced as it needs to be, then I would ask that the city attorney be brought in early, sooner rather than later. Clearly, if it does have to go to the point of an appeal at the State Supreme Court, then so be it, but let's bring all of the legal wherewithal and muscle and might that we might have to augment what you were doing yourself through the city where this is primarily going, which feels this is so important. Mr. Lavange shared with us not only his motion and his passion on this, but the letters and the emails that he is getting. And I think clearly, across the board, everywhere, everyone is saying this ought not to be stopped. Even if people had debated the merits of this originally, it has now been decided. Our democracy says this is the way to go and it's under construction. To stop it at this point makes no sense at all. And I hope that, as I say, we can provide as strong a unified front as is necessary, bringing the legal team of the City of Los Angeles into this as soon as possible. So I hope that the council accepts that friendly amendment to not only put our action by our words into effect, which is what this motion will do, but put our action by our legal power and legal might behind it, because sometimes in a court of law, that's what helps and that is what makes a difference. So let's have a city attorney in partnership there, representing fully the City of Los Angeles.
I would accept that, but I want our city attorney to acknowledge that.
Our office has been monitoring this and if directed by the council, we'd be happy to join forces.
Good. I accept it. We sent the resolution today and then refer to the city attorney, Cindy. Great. Great idea.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I've participated in the last two days in trying to make a very strong statement that we want the Orange Line to continue. Not only for the transportation needs we've talked about, the benefit, the linkage that Mr. Lavange has talked about, from Mr. Zine's district all the way to Mr. Lavange's district. It passes through my district on the way there. But to have a transportation system that links up and a map that is shown here allows you to visually see how someone from the west San Fernando Valley can come through downtown, can go to the east, go to Pasadena, go, go all the way to the Los Angeles Airport or close enough, which we hope is going to go all the way into the airport as we do our reconstruction there. But we need to send the clear message to the judge that this city is going to stand very strong and support the MTA in this decision. I've heard from many of my constituents who say, nothing is easy. It's been a long haul, but we've all bought into, both financially from the MTA, but also from our constituency, to say, we need this transportation link. It's critically important. And I spoke yesterday to the gentleman who owns Ritz Cleaners, where we were standing with Economic Alliance and VICA and ZEV and many of my colleagues here. And he came up to me and he said, look, I supported this. I think it's so important, but look what's happening to my business. Because this construction has been stopped, I now have, instead of a couple of weeks where I can barely get into my business, I now could have months where it's going to have to stay exactly as it is. And the MTA, the, the construction manager that was there said, if we get the go-ahead from the judge, within six days or less, we will be able to have this intersection finished. So that business owner, those business owners that we promised would have a limited blockage of their street, a limited, I think disruption of their services are now also being impacted. And that's not part of the $70,000 or more that we're going to lose each day. It's hard to quantify how this is damaging those businesses who have, I think, have been very supportive of what we're trying to do in those neighborhoods. So I am pleased that the city attorney's office is, is going to help out, that my colleagues have similarly stood up and I have some of my constituents who are very affew that led this fight against MTA that live in my district, who are very unhappy with me and kept calling, saying, you know, stop this from going forward. Well, sometimes we have to make those difficult decisions to say, this is what's right for the region, this is right for the community. And I think the MTA and, and under the leadership of ZEV, when he was on the board in the development of this, put in insurances relative to irrigation, relative to ensuring there was not graffiti-ridden areas and some commitments that I think is really critical for my community. So I stand here in support today and look forward to, hopefully, you know, that the judge will be listening to us and, and the legal arguments that we will be providing to them, which are the most critical, that we perform this EIR in, I think, a very substantial and responsible manner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city attorney's been requested in the motion that we presented, myself along with Councilman Lavange and I think Antonio Vierigosa signed on to that move that the council have, Mr. Snoble here and the city attorney and Los Angeles Department of Transportation. I understand the city attorney's office is not prepared to make any comments on it today, but they are aware that we're asking them to get involved to the fullest extent as dictated in the motion. Okay. Now, a few questions. The transit hub, Owen's Mouth has been shut down because of the transit hub that's being built. The transit hub is part of the project. Is that now on hold along with everything else?
Negative, sir. The Councilman Zine, the transit hub work is still continuing. The roads are still closed. Our contract is still working. The portion that is not being worked on is obviously just a very small part dealing with the foundation, but the rest of the work on the transit center is a city awarded contract, so that work is still going.
So the point of closure on Owen's Mouth?
Yes.
That will remain for?
Until November 15th and we'll, we'll be able to open up the street. The project is, as you know, moving ahead and we have heard about the complaints about noise starting early and we've dealt with that, but that work is moving ahead, is still on time, on the budget at this time. The portion that is being held up, obviously, is a little bit of work that MTA's contractor is going to do with us, that we're doing with, with them in cooperation, but that's just a very, very small part of the overall project for the hub.
No, I understand it's a small part. My concern is that we got Owen's Mouth closed, which is affecting a lot of businesses.
It's going to open up by November 15th.
Okay, because obviously with the shopping center there, Westfield does not want to have that impediment for their business, which obviously, we made a commitment that we would get that opened and we wouldn't have a prolonged closure.
Absolutely.
And it's a third of this complete, a third of it's in my district. It runs from the Warner Center all the way through and a major portion of my district's impacted. The major intersections, DeSoto, these other locations where we have lane restrictions, are those going to remain in place and are we permitted to open anything up during this construction phase or this lack of construction?
My understanding is that the adjustments have been made in terms of the detours in the street and the making sure that everything's safe, but most of the current detours are going to stay in place the way they are. They just made it safe. We're not reopening any of the streets because we cannot complete the work.
And the fences along the construction site, some of those fences are coming down. Vandalism, I'm sure, is going to be taking place as the fences come down. Who do we contact to have those fences put back in shape, because there are already some down? Yesterday, when I went to the news conference at Woodman and Oxnard, I traveled the entire stretch and there's a number of fences that have been taken down, whether intentionally or unintentionally, which now people have access. And I know we have some areas that are paved, some areas that are dirt, some areas improved with curbing. I think it's just a mockery of justice that the court has intervened and stopped this, but what do we do for those areas that are now fences coming down in the construction area?
Yeah, just contact our public relations staff or my office and we'll make sure we get out there. The court order doesn't allow us doing any construction, but we can do things to protect the public's interest from a safety or hazardous standpoint, so we'd be happy to get out there and take care of that.
And how many public hearings took place over the 20-year span? And I remember, Roger, you were at a public hearing we had at Pierce College when there was concern. We're beyond the point of public hearing to decide if we're going to do a project or not, but how many public hearings took place over the last 20 years on this particular project? It was obviously before you got arrived.
Yes, it was, my understanding is they were extensive public outreach, many, many meetings. Obviously, there were a lot of opinions on both sides, as many people have already recognized here. This has gone through a very long process and it has had more than a share of public hearings and public input.
And with the court intervening, how long could it possibly be held in its current state?
I, I don't think it's, it's desirable to keep it in its current state any longer than probably a month, something like that, because these intersections do have, have situations there. We are in construction, we're in the dirt, some of that is hazardous material, most of it's been removed, but some of it's can still be there. We wanted to continue the testing. We're not going to be able to do any planning for erosion purposes, so obviously, the faster we get this thing going, the better off everybody's going to be.
And I know we want to fast-track to go back on construction, but my concern is, how long could this be delayed?
We, if the court continues to stay, it could be a couple of years.
Okay. So in that particular situation, we would have the entire San Fernando Valley east-west corridor inconvenienced, to say the least, and the court process would then be parallel with this delay? Or the, the, the court has intervened and said you can't do any more construction. The question is, the long and short of that, they could continue that stay for up to two year period of time?
Well, they, they would continue it until such time that we do the environmental work and they would then say, we're free to either go forward or stop the project altogether, however that environmental process works out. Now, in our papers, we are saying that if they, if they are going to continue the stay, that we need to get back in and, and do a lot more work, because we just can't leave it like it is. We're going to have to go in and stabilize it, make those intersections, put them back to a working condition. So we are making that plea to the judge. If they do go with this hard stay, that they at least allow us to put things back to a workable situation.
And the cost involved, initially, there was a bid, 300-plus million dollars. If that takes place, what do you anticipate the additional cost to be?
We, we anticipate that the additional cost would be, would exceed most likely $100 million if we had to go back and rebid the project, terminate the existing contractor and take up to two years then to go through that process and complete the work.
And the, is the, is the county council joined in litigation along with the MTA council?
Our council is the county council.
Your county, the?
Our council, our all-the-time council is the county council, so their, their office is handling it.
And then what about L.A. City? They'd be appropriate to join?
I certainly believe so.
Okay. There was, I, I'm on, I know I'm out of time. I just had, so the light is dim or the light is bright?
Well, I think if we can get the message across to the appellate court that this is a huge project and certainly does affect a lot more people than they, they might have initially thought, that we might have a shot at, at getting the stay lifted and let us continue to build a project, even if we go back and do some additional environmental work on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, Mr. Lavange, Mr. Zine asked most of the question I wanted, but I just want to clarify something on the traffic flow. I've heard from people that live in the area and, and just for the record, actually, some of this does go in my district too. You don't think the 12th district going that far south, but it does now. One thing I've heard is about the traffic problems around the intersections, some of which were closed, some of which were greatly restricted and the traffic flow forcing people into other streets. What is the traffic impact as far as number of intersections that are affected and estimated number of cars that are being rerouted or taking detours? Do you have any?
We, we currently have 11 intersections that are yet to be finished, so those 11 intersections are definitely being impacted. The amount of cars, I don't know the exact volume, but again, what we are hopeful is that the court will lift the stay and then we'll get back and focus on those intersections and get them completed as quickly as we can and then open back up.
So I would think it'd be safe to say thousands of cars are easily impacted, being rerouted, causing additional degradation to the environment, which is what the judge seems to be worried about, but the judge's very action is causing environmental problems with additional contamination of the air, et cetera, and the cost to the taxpayers of gas, go out of the way, everything. So tremendous impacts that they are creating by their action.
Absolutely.
Secondly, the cost factor, we've talked about the cost, $70,000 a day, that's coming directly out of the funding sources which we are allocated toward this. How do you repay that? How do you replace those monies?
That becomes very difficult. We're going to have to, once we, once the stay is lifted and we get back to work, we're going to have to look at the magnitude. We do have a, a small contingency in the overall project budget, but the longer the stay, the more difficult it is to live within our current budget.
And at $70,000 a day, those contingencies evaporate very rapidly, obviously. So the likely impact is that, one, the funding sources, you're not going to probably get additional money from the state or anything else for this. You're going to have to find it within MTA's resources you have now or take it out of additional Prop C or something like that, which means less money for other projects down the road.
It's even worse than that. It's, we stand to lose $68 million in state funds and if this project isn't built because of the air quality and the need for this project, we could lose hundreds of millions in federal funds.
And I think that's a big issue that we need to let the people know and the judge certainly is that the impact on the conformance requirements on L.A. County in the region on air quality standards, as longer we wait on these projects, the more out of conformance, the more impossible it becomes to me. And then we end up like Atlanta and we lose all our money for transportation, which could be the worst scenario possible. So I think, I think Mr. Lavange and all of you have brought this really to our head that this is very important, that we have a lot to lose of this. It's not just inconvenience, it's not just another project. There's numerous domino effects in transportation and air quality and federal funding that can come from this. It can be very damaging to the entire region. Thank you very much. I think we need an absolute unanimous vote and a very strong statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Many of the points that have, that I wanted to bring up have been mentioned already. I wanted to make sure we understood all of the different pressure points they have at the federal and state level, but we understand we're in a legal proceeding, but anything we could do, I know we will make happen. Two is that, colleagues, as I've been going throughout the city to area planning commissions, I've been to the Hillside Federation discussing the issue of housing and the assertion that how can we start planning for more housing in areas when we don't have the infrastructure? And the main element of the infrastructure that is pointed out to, pointed to is transportation. So we are in a chicken and egg situation. We do need to push hard on this element of our general plan, which is the transportation element, to demonstrate that we are forward-thinking, that we can create these relationships. And the housing component in and of itself becomes a critical piece to how we connect with these kinds of systems that actually makes people think when they get up in the morning, maybe I don't have to use my car, or maybe I don't have to buy that other car for a family member and therefore have more cars parked out in the street and all the congestion issues that come from not having transportation. So I'm not preaching to the choir. I just want to tell you folks, thank you very much. And Rick Thorpe, I have a lot of confidence. We did the goal line on time and below budget and we went through many legal hoops. So Mr. Snoble, you've got a great team with the mayor's support and everyone coming together. I'm hoping that the light will be dimmer, I mean, it would be brighter and not dimmer. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vierigosa.
Yes, I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Lavange, for presenting this motion and for asking me to co-present it with him. Thank you for your leadership, not just in the fourth councilmatic district, but also on the MTA board. I had for some time been originally opposed to this project from years before. I was concerned about the impact on Sherei Zedek, the synagogue there, but has a number of speakers have said earlier, we've made a decision and the decision's been made and the construction is begun and to leave an entire bowling alley in, you know, in a backyard, because that's essentially what we have here, unfinished in the way that it has, even though the elected officials on the Metropolitan Transit Authority have made the decision fairly and moved ahead with some community support, seems to me to be the wrong way to go. We know that there is not the requisite, frankly, investment in the San Fernando Valley that we need for public transit. This is a down payment on, frankly, my belief that we need to do even more. And so I want to thank Councilmember Lavange for his, for bringing this matter to the council and add my voice to the many voices who have already spoken to support the idea that we should go to the court to indicate our support, not with should go to the court to indicate our support, notwithstanding some concerns, and I thank you for being here today.
Councilmember Zine.
Yes, I, one more item that failed to bring up is the parking structure at the, or near the transit hub. What's the status of that, and how is that impacted by this?
Is that the Boeing?
That's the structure we were going to buy and utilize Boeing property? Actually, the land and then build a parking structure on Boeing property?
Yeah, the Boeing property. We're still working with Boeing on that. That would be unrelated to the construction, because it would be a whole separate contract. The holdup there is simply acquiring the property. We're still in negotiations with Boeing to acquire that property. Once that's done, we should be able to move forward with the parking structure.
That wouldn't have any impact on this other issue?
I don't think so.
My opinion is that it should not. The city is doing some design for the MTA. MTA staff has already designed it. Once again, it needs to be purchased, but I think that's just a matter of, I don't want to say days, but they've got to come up with a number.
I know, I've met with Supervisor Gerald Soski about that a number of times, trying to get that matter resolved so we can purchase that and we can build that parking structure to accommodate the thousands of people who we anticipate will be using it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was covered and it wasn't lost in discussion.
It's not part of the project in terms of the environmental document that was prepared, so it's separate, so it's not affected by the delay of the Orange Line project.
Okay, and also, I don't know if somebody in Lloyd Levine's still here. I wanted to thank him, I don't know if he's left, but to thank him for coming by and sponsoring that legislation, hopefully to get this ball rolling again. Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you. The other L, the other L. Well, first, I wanted to just rise and support my colleague on this, and have you seen the movie Collateral?
No, yes.
You haven't seen it yet, Roger?
No, I haven't seen it.
I thought you knew everything about that film. The highlight in the film is an MTA rail. You've got to go see it. Everybody in here that's a rail fan, you've got to go see Collateral. Great scene at the end. MTA's a clean, clean train car, spotless. So I don't know how you got that done, but that one is clean. Anyway, I think we're at a point in Southern California's life where we've got to accept the inevitable. We've got another 6 million people moving into this region by the year 2030. We've got to get people out of cars into rails, get people out of cars into buses. I know it's difficult. I know it's painful. Nobody ever wants to see this happen during their period, but we've got to think about our grandkids, we've got to think about our great-grandkids. By the time they get a shot at going to work, going to school, going to the doctor, getting dialysis or whatever it is, this is going to be the future. This is how they're going to get there. And so I think today, great credit to Tom Labonge for having the courage to step up, and Antonio Vierigosa, and Dennis Zine, and Wendy Gruehl, and Greg Smith, all of our Great Valley Council members, Assemblymember who is here today. It's tough sometimes on these big land use issues, can be very volatile, and people say it's where we start our recall efforts, but in that sort of moment of heat, these guys are standing tall, and I think the MTA is on the right path here. So I enthusiastically support this effort, and I'm looking forward to getting the Expo Light Rail. Councilmember Parks and I are going to be on board, hoping to ride the first train. If we can live a political life that long, we'll be there. And anyway, good luck to you, and thank you for this project, and thanks for the leadership today, my colleagues.
And to close, Councilmember Tom.
Thank you very much. Call for the question, and let's get a unanimous vote.
All right, the matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 out of 12.
That is approved. We will send that forthwith as well. Thank you for our MTA visitors as well. Next, I think we've had a request to take item 36 out of order, so 36 will now be before us. And let me recognize Mr. Garcetti. I think he is going to be the first speaker to introduce this, item 36.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would move.
Mr. Smith?
I need to make it a public announcement that although I do not reach the maximum level of the state of California of $25,000 of investment, I do own shares in Walmart stores, and therefore I'm recusing myself on this matter.
All right, with that announcement, we will recuse Mr. Smith. Mr. Garcetti.
Okay. I would move, colleagues, that we have had an extensive public hearing. I want to thank people again for their patience this morning. We've had over a dozen public meetings surrounding this, and I would move that we just have a very brief public comment period. I know we have seven cards, so I will ask people to try to keep it to about a minute, and I would move for seven minutes of public comment.
Is there any objection to reopening the public comment for a brief seven-minute presentation? All right, seeing none, I will call the names of the speakers and ask that you line up behind the podium and begin to address us on this matter. The first three speakers will be Bob Jimenez, who's representing State Senator Richard Alarcon, Dr. Robert Rodino, and Elliot Petty. Please step forward.
Madam President, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I'm Bob Jimenez. I'm a Public Affairs Analyst for State Senator Richard Alarcon. He regrets not being here himself, pressing business at the state level, but he sent this letter along, parts of which I'd like to read. Writes the senator, although I am not a fan of the Walmart business model, I understand that sometimes there are advantages to new stores being introduced into our communities. As a former City Councilmember, I recall the city's decision to issue the necessary permits for the Panorama Mall Walmart in my district. In initial project negotiations, I resisted Walmart's request to set up shop in the General Motors Plant because of inevitable harmful economic ramifications. Walmart then considered another site four blocks away at Roscoe and Van Nuys. The short of it was that at the end of the day, Walmart's presence could be supported because it paid better wages, provided solely needed anchor to the mall, and it did not threaten the jobs of over 1,000 grocery employees. However, the superstore ordinance before you today addresses an entirely different type of store than the one I approved at Panorama City, because superstores do sell groceries. The retail grocery sector has traditionally provided the city of Los Angeles with high-paying jobs, and as seen with the devastating UFCW strike, the mere threat of superstores has caused an impact on wages and benefits of working people. That in part is why the senator introduced an ordinance like yours, this State Bill 1056, which provides a community-based approach to the planning and development of superstores. It accounts for external impacts such as lower wages and benefits, less entrepreneurial opportunity, the displacement of other business, and neighborhood blight. This is the most important part of the senator's letter. Just last week, a UC Berkeley study found that Walmart's wages, on average, were 31% lower than those of the broader group of larger retailers. $9.70 an hour versus $14.01 an hour. Last year, as Walmart enjoyed the benefits of being the most successful corporation of the world, taxpayers were subsidized.
Could I ask you to please sum up? We have seven minutes, and you used half of it, so I would like to.
Well, the end of it is that he supports, the senator urges his support of Councilmember Garcetti's motion, and hopes that you will join him in a coalition of labor business and conservative groups in supporting SB 1056. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Robert Rodino of Rodino Associates, and I prepared the superstore report for the city of Los Angeles. And then just briefly, there are four issues that need to be considered uppermost as you're considering this ordinance. One is that in a mature urban market like the city of Los Angeles, it's almost impossible to have a major retailer the size of a superstore locate in areas of the city without taking retail sales from other retailers. The growth just isn't sufficient. We're not growing like the Inland Empire or the Las Vegas area. So that retailer must thrive by taking retail sales from other retailers. That may mean that those other retailers will close down their businesses. These include grocery stores, supermarkets, and mom-and-pops, many of whom you may have subsidized through your investments in developments and attracting retailers in the inner city, and so there would be a net loss in a number of ways. Secondly, the impact on the labor market may be a negative one, because if retailers who lose sales lay off their employees or close down altogether, the employees hired by the supercenter are not the same in number as those laid off and are usually paid much lower wages and far fewer benefits. So there may be a net loss in economic vitality for a community. The third is the impact on land use and urban design. Most of the supercenters occupy 10 to 15 acres of blacktop parking with a big box in the middle that are not very attractive, and also gobble up a lot of land, very precious land, that may be better used for industrial development, for housing, for parks and open space that you may want to examine. But the fourth area, you notice I said in the beginning, "almost no place in the city." The fourth area, some of the members of the council have properly pointed out, that there may be areas in the city of Los Angeles in which the first three issues do not really apply, in which a supercenter may locate and not have the negative impacts that I've just outlined. And therefore, I am in support of your flexible approach of looking at each case-by-case basis and looking at an economic impact analysis, and I think you're well-advised to pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Petty will be our next speaker, followed by Margot Feinberg, Roxanna Tynan, and Dr. William Jarvis-Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to ask all who are with us in support of the Big Box Ordinance to please stand. My name is Elliot Petty, and I'm an Inglewood resident and a proud member of the Coalition for a Better Inglewood. Earlier this year, the great city of Inglewood almost became the only city in the country which would have lost their local control over business development. Through the perniciously one-sided efforts of Walmart, the leading retailer in the nation, Inglewood residents could have lost their democratic rights to public input and to public review of the big-box development that would have changed the quality of their city forever. With no traffic impact reports, Walmart would have guaranteed easy access to their site with no regard for the ensuing excessive traffic and congestion on normally quiet streets that lead in and out of neighborhoods where families live. The reckless runaround of the mandated environmental impact reports would have no doubt abandoned longstanding efforts to make our air, streets, and waterways clean. It is through these experiences that I fully support the Big Box Ordinance that is before you today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Because of the shortness of time, my name is Reverend Jarvis-Johnson. I'm speaking on behalf of CLU, Clergy and Leadership United for Economic Justice, and for LANE, Los Angeles Alliance for New Economy. We just want to share that this Big Box Ordinance should be approved. We're looking for, we're looking at how the neighborhoods are blighted. We know that in many instances, the neighborhood, we are the ones who have to look at the big box. We are the ones who have to live by the big box, and we know what the impact would be upon us. And so we ask and we urge you that you will approve this ordinance. Just on tomorrow, I'll be going to another city, looking at what the impact of a Walmart there, a superstore, and we'll see what, how the mom-and-pop businesses have left. You've heard the reports earlier of how it does not replace, new customers are not coming in, it's just coming in from the other stores. All of these things need to be reconsidered. We ask that you look at the environment impact and that the community have a voice in what goes into their community. Thank you.
We have three more speaker cards, so let me call the three to speak briefly. Margot Feinberg, Roxanna Tynan, and Chris Curry.
Okay, well, since our time is short, I just want to lend the voice of the thousands of members of the United Food and Commercial Workers Local 770 in support of this ordinance. These men and women have shown their part, shown the city what they have done and how they contribute to the city. We ask that the supercenters do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roxanna Tynan and Chris Curry. Roxanna passes. Mr. Curry, Chris Curry, would you like to address us? I don't see.
I'm Chris Curry, Vice President with Westfield Corporation. Westfield currently operates and owns five regional shopping centers in the city of Los Angeles. Westfield Shopping Towns, Topanga, Promenade, Fashion Square, Century City, and Eagle Rock. Three of our properties are located in Warner Center and are impacted by this ordinance, which affects all of our department stores and other stores such as Target and Sears as well. Though through the purchase and the redevelopment of our malls in Los Angeles, Westfield already has made an investment totaling hundreds of millions of dollars, and we are responsible for thousands of jobs in the city, and we are posed to invest another few hundred million dollars over the next five years in Los Angeles, creating hundreds of good-paying construction-related jobs as well as permanent retail jobs. As such, we take seriously any ordinance that might impact our ability to continue to serve our customers, our retailers, and our larger communities now or in the future. Retail is dynamic, and it's a changing business. We need flexibility. Westfield raised a number of concerns with the initial draft ordinance, fearing that it contained, among other things, vague language that would add yet another step to an already onerous approval process. For the past few months, we have worked with the unions, the council offices, the mayor and the city attorney's office, and others interested in this ordinance to improve the document. The end result is this document before you today. We continue to be concerned that legislation such as this may impede economic opportunity here in Los Angeles. We are also concerned that retailers may look to surrounding communities with less onerous zoning process in lieu of coming to Los Angeles. Having said that, Westfield is satisfied that the document in its current form and with no additions or further conditions imposed represents a comprehensive and thoughtful effort on the part of the many groups impacted by this legislation to mitigate many of the business community's concerns. We appreciate the efforts to make this ordinance before you today a workable process. I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. That now concludes the public hearing. Mr. Garcetti will be turned to you.
Thank you. If you could hold my time, and I'd like to call Renata Semrell from our mayor's office forward, just to give a couple comments. We also have a city attorney who's here, colleagues as well, if we have any questions. I'll give a couple comments after this.
Thank you, councilman. President, Honorable Members of the City Council, Renata Semrell, Mayor Hans, Deputy Mayor for Economic Development and Housing, and I'm here this afternoon to offer Mayor Hans strong support for the ordinance that is before you today for approval. As the representative from Westfield Shopping Center mentioned, this was truly a collaborative process where all the stakeholders came together at the table to draft the ordinance that was going to protect the interests of the city's most challenged neighborhoods while at the same time allowing business to thrive. And as many of you aware, this policy debate began several months ago with a proposed ban of superstore ordinances within economic incentive zones. From the outset, this legislative process collectively, we have sought a means to ensuring that we support responsible development in our communities, but ensure that these projects encourage and not deserv the economic health and prosperity of our most challenged neighborhoods. What we heard very clearly through much debate with a variety of stakeholders on the issues, that many community members wanted the option of allowing superstores within their neighborhoods, but also wanted an opportunity to weigh in on both the land use and economic impact that these stores have on their community. And as such, the city decided to propose a discretionary approval process with the requirement that the applicant analyze the impacts that these types of stores would have on their neighborhoods. The mayor believes that this companion piece is crucial, companion piece to the ordinance that was passed by City Council in July of 2001 is critical to our effort to ensure that continued growth and prosperity of our city. The economic impact assessment required by the applicants is not so impractical as some have stated, but rather Mayor Hans believes a sound measure of public policy to identify and root out any unintended negative consequences of big-box developments on existing land use, business, and employment opportunities. This is not an anti-business agenda, quite the opposite. It is a careful look at the likely impacts, reasonably assuring that on net, such developments is likely to improve and not harm business and employment prospects and the long-term economic health of the neighborhoods that the mayor cares so deeply about. Many studies, credible literature and analysis have presented, Mr. Rodino's points today articulate those as well, which at a minimum documents how certain large-scale retail developments may well have unintended impacts. While prohibiting superstores could have been a reasonable approach, we believe that an even better approach is a discretionary process that is before you today. We believe this approach is more responsive to the developers and better enables the city and communities to preserve that which is already good in our communities. Mayor Hans believes this discretionary permitting process is a sensible means to achieve this end. In closing, the mayor particularly appreciates the leadership of the city attorney, councilmen Ed Reyes, and Eric Garcetti in this process, and he would like to commend the planning department staff and proponents of this ordinance for ensuring that it evolves through a well-informed and wide debate about the direction Los Angeles should take as it embarks on a new era of challenges, growth, and prosperity. He urges the council's approval of this ordinance. Thank you for your time to speak this afternoon.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, today, just to go through what we're going to look at, today we have the committee report. Tomorrow, we will have the actual ordinance in hand, which will probably, unless it goes through unanimously, which it might tomorrow, will require a second reading. So that, so just to give you an idea of process-wise, what we vote on today will give the intention of where we head, and will give strong direction. City Attorney will bring the fully-prepared ordinance tomorrow, and then that will be held over for a second reading. We are voting today, colleagues, on two fundamental things. One is a voice for the community, and two is making sure we look after taxpayer money, two of our most, two of our strongest responsibilities here in the city of Los Angeles. And I want to thank everybody who is here from the bottom of my heart, because I know folks on all sides of this issue took time off, came down to City Hall, came out into the community, talked to each one of us about how to make this better, and I think what we have before us today is something we can be And I think what we have before us today is something we can be proud of in the city of Los Angeles. Angelinos have a lot of pride. We have pride in our neighborhoods, we have pride in our city. And because of that pride, when a stranger comes knocking, as was said in committee, we don't just throw open the door, we first see who it is and what they want. And if we can find a way for folks to come into our city in the right way, if we can find a way for people to engage in a dialogue instead of, as we've seen in some neighboring cities, trying to dictate the terms, we can have a good relationship. In fact, we are one of the most open cities in this country. Fundamentally, this is about land use and about blight. We must be responsible to taxpayers, because on one hand, if we are paying money at the federal and the state and the local level, whether it's tax breaks and our enterprise zones, our empowerment communities, our redevelopment areas, we don't, on the other hand, want to undercut those policies. And that is what this is about, making sure we have responsible and good development here in the city. Some critics have said, why are we talking about economics here in Los Angeles? Economics affects our communities. When jobs leave a community, when wages, as the Orange County Business Council has said here in Southern California, about $3 billion of wages are threatened here, leave our community, that leads to blight. That's the connection we need to make today to land use, why economics and land use work together. When we started this process, we said we would listen. And you know what? Something remarkable happened in the process. We did, and it helped strengthen and make this a better ordinance than what it was. We listened to newspapers, like the Los Angeles Times, who wrote an editorial, give us the flexibility, some sort of policy that will look at a case-by-case basis at development supercenters that would come in. That's exactly what this does. Businesses, like Westfield, even Walmart, who was here in the committee, said this is a greatly improved ordinance. That's a huge victory to hear that sort of consensus. We listened to councilmembers, and I know some of the things Mr. Parks is interested in, we're going to incorporate into reports back in giving flexibility to people in their own council districts. We listened to the planning department and the planning commission, as they added important things as well, and to other departments. At the end, we have a flexible, a thoughtful, and a rational ordinance that says we, as Americans and as Angelinos, have a basic right to be able to comment on what happens in our community, to be able to make it work better. And I hope that this leads to something that engages businesses, because there are, there's not just one business this covers, by the way. There are supercenters that Target has, that Kmart has, as well as Walmart. Any company that thinks it's just about them, they should look at the retail landscape. But I hope it leads to a conversation, because here in Los Angeles, we have proved during this ordinance that we know how to listen and we know how to engage. But when you try to shut down the democratic process, when you try to dictate how things should go, that's when we lose the ability to have strong communities. In closing, we don't have to choose between low prices and decent wages, and we certainly don't have to choose between low wages and stable communities. For all of us, we can have a city which has good jobs, which does not have blight in our neighborhoods, and at the same time protects consumer choice. I thank you for your help in making this strong, and I urge your vote today. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to thank everyone here. It's been a long road for many of us. We all know that in many of our areas that we've been investing in for, since I can't remember, back in the early '90s, we were talking about revitalization plans, our empowerment zones, how we bring together that social and economic network to offset this terrible tale of two cities we have. Colleagues in your desk, you'll see a map, and you see where all the programs, all the different efforts that have been evolving in the city have emerged to address this quality of life issue. What this ordinance does, it marries the two concerns. It focuses on land use, but it attaches to it this category, this criteria, that speaks to how these different economic programs sustain these particular pockets. I can tell you that in my district, the few acres we have left, there's a big struggle between whether you place a park there or a school. And if you're going to place a school, how many homes do you have to displace? Yet, we have these other uses that would come in without a second thought of building facilities, three to four or five football fields big, majority being parking lots. And the question becomes, do we need these vast oasis, if you will, these islands of asphalt, when we have all these other pressures that have been accumulating over the years? So as we address these inconsistencies, as we try to establish a balance, this ordinance does that, but it does it by engaging the businesses. It does it by putting into consideration the mom-and-pop stores, the commercial corridors that are at a very delicate stage in just trying to survive. We spend endless amount of hours and resources putting together business investment districts, LONIs initiatives. We put together transit corridors, we put together zoning patterns that talks about mixed-use, commercial, and residential together. And to have it been, to have it be blown out by these giant facilities makes no sense. So let's move forward. I want to thank the Community Development Department, the CRA, the Housing Department, and the Planning Department for their work, the mayor's office for their stewardship, Councilman Garcetti's staff and the committee for working jointly and exemplifying how two committees can work together to address significant issues for the welfare of all. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me first of all apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, I was at the Coliseum Commission, and so many of the questions I'm going to ask today may have been able to be handled at the committee. I'd like to ask if staff could come up from the CRA and the planning, because we asked in one item that is in the report, asked for a side-by-side comparison of what is currently being requested and what we currently do. And I think it's, would be educational to ask CRA to pass out that side-by-side comparison and walk us through what is now being asked of developers, which is a flowchart that runs about three pages, before we add any other responsibilities as it relates to the new ordinance. And so, if you could hold my time while they walk us through this chart, I think it would be helpful for all of us to know what is currently required.
Thank you. Don Spivak from the Redevelopment Agency. The chart that the councilman refers to has been distributed, it's the one titled Standard CRA Process for Projects Requesting Land Assemblage Assistance. And I do need to point out that this chart applies to those projects in a CRA area where there is a request for assistance for land assemblage, and to a secondary degree for financial assistance. If a developer, property owner, does not request or need land assemblage assistance, does not request or need financial assistance, then many of these steps do not apply. But the procedure starts with an applicant submitting a proposal to the Redevelopment Agency, which is reviewed by the staff to determine whether it's viable, whether it is consistent with a redevelopment plan. There is then a management team step that approves it, and it is reported to the Board of Commissioners. When you're dealing with acquisition, there are a number of steps that are required by law, because redevelopment agencies frequently have the ability to use eminent domain to acquire property. The requirements for notification, for offering, offering opportunities for participation are very stringent and spelled out in the law. So the first step, when there is even acquisition to be contemplated, is that every owner and tenant on a property that may be acquired is notified. So they need to be identified, they need to be notified. The notification is in the form of what's called a statement of interest, which allows them to express what their preference would be as an owner and a tenant, that is, to develop a comparable project, to develop the same type of project, to participate as an equity partner, to be bought out, to be relocated elsewhere in the project area, or a range of other options. They are asked to submit a written response as to their preference within roughly 30 days. Those responses are then evaluated. At that time, there is a step that is also required, which is that if among those responses there are other owners or tenants who appear to be capable and financially able to carry out the project that was originally proposed, then there may be a need to proceed to a request for proposals that would allow for that additional participation or those additional opportunities. And if that step goes forward, then a request for proposals has to be drafted, reported to the board, reviewed by our advisory committees, and then distributed. If, on the other hand, it does not appear that there are respondents who have that capability, then that step and the series of steps that follow do not have to take place. There is then a review that is required of all of those responses to determine that they are, in fact, related to the project, that they are relevant and competent proposals. A staff panel is put together to evaluate and to rank them. They are, the PACs and CACs are consulted as part of that process, and the staff then prepares and makes recommendations to the board on a finalist or finalists, and also provides for debriefing people who are not selected. That selection recommendation goes to the board's own project review committee before going on to the board. After the board approves it, then the next step is actually to prepare a series of negotiation parameters which are incorporated into a document called an Exclusive Right to Negotiate Agreement. The agreement is one that is subject to review by PACs and CACs and subject to approval by the agency's board and city council, following which there is a period of negotiations with the intended developer. Frequently, those negotiations include terms that are financial, they include such things as whether there will be financial participation, whether the agency will, in fact, exercise its authority to assemble property, whether there will be specific requirements to meet additional public purposes that are beyond the scope of the original project, and all of the environmental steps are taken through in that period of time also. So the process proceeds with both this negotiation and with the environmental review. The environmental documentation is certified prior to the resultant agreement, which is called a disposition and development agreement. That draft of the disposition and development agreement is, again, put through the CRA's public participation process, its advisory committees, before being presented to the project review committee and the board. The action on the development agreement is subject to approval both by board and city council. Assuming that the agreement has been approved, then the agreement is executed, along with any financial agreements that may be required. The developer, at that point, is able to start the identification and processing of certain permits, but the CRA is then required to begin a process of acquisition, which starts with advising every affected property owner of the possibility that their property may be acquired, and the notification goes out of the intent to appraise the property. The CRA, using a third-party appraiser, prepares appraisals, reviews them, and then makes offers to the parties that own the property. If the offers are accepted, then we immediately proceed to escrow the property. If not, there is a period of negotiation, the owner is given the opportunity to provide counterinformation. That is, again, frequently results in a negotiated settlement. If it does not, then the decision is whether to proceed into eminent domain, which is a resolution of necessity, which goes before the agency's board. If the resolution of necessity is approved, it is accompanied by what is called an order of possession, which allows the CRA to take possession of property while the arguments continue over property value and other related issues. At that time, occupants of the site, who are under law entitled to substantial relocation benefits, are notified, they are interviewed. There typically is a period of around 180 days that take place during which the relocation occurs. Individuals are offered alternative locations for the relocation, they're given their particular benefits. Site clearance does not take place until the site has been vacated. At the point that the site is cleared and the developer provides proof of financing, the developer then, under the agreement, takes possession of the property, then proceeds to complete the permit process to obtain construction permits, starts construction. As the construction proceeds, if there are conditional use permits for particular activities on the site, then that would be the time at which a developer would apply for such conditional use permits. And then, those conditional use permits are also, among others, referred to neighborhood councils, CRA advisory committees, which have an opportunity to submit comments to the planning department on their thoughts regarding the issuance or non-issuance of any conditional use permit. At the last step, there may be additional discretionary actions that are required by the redevelopment agency, and if so, then that goes, that's the final step in the process.
Let me ask you, from the things you've just articulated, at what point does the new process kick in?
The new process, as is contemplated, would come about probably at either of two points. If a superstore is contemplated at the time the applicant comes in, as shown on the first page, the impact analysis should be done at that point, so that it is done very early in the game, people have an opportunity to see and respond to the points that have been raised there, the analysis that was raised there. If it is not proposed until late in the development, after the agreements have all been executed, then at the last point, it would come up at the time a conditional use permit were applied for, and would be at the end of the process, as shown on the third page.
So if it's the late part, that's after all of the land assemblage, all of the issues that you articulate, about 80% of the things are already done?
That's correct. In that particular case, that would be correct.
And is this what we commonly refer to as an economic assistance area?
Economic assistance areas include redevelopment project areas, among other areas.
Okay. Also, would you take just a brief moment on the side-by-side, on the larger chart, and walk us through that as far as the comparisons of what currently is there and what the new procedures are and when they will take place?
Yes, my name is Frank Eberhard.
And Frank, I'm going to ask you to be very, very briefly about seven councilmembers who still would like to speak, and just highlight the differences if you can.
I will be very brief. My name is Frank Eberhard, a member of the planning department. The top line is the condition of use process. That process is not changed from what is currently practiced.
And you're referring to the two-page?
Yes, I'm trying, the large document, the top line which says, planning department condition of use process. That does not change. What is changed is, on the third line, where it says, Joint CRA, CDD, CDP Economic Impact Analysis Procedure. And this is new, and it's integrated into the existing planning department condition of use process. Assuming this is not in the CRA project area, or there's been a CRA project involvement in it, it would be at this time that the application would be made, both for the condition of use and the presentation of a draft environmental impact analysis report. That report is then analyzed by the CRA. A report to the planning commission is made after, at a maximum amount of time, within 60 days, that report would, it include an analysis of the report that was provided by the applicant. It would include recommendations for mitigations, if they were needed, to mitigate the economic impact that had land use-related matters. And that would be then integrated into the condition of use process. The change here, then, is only that an additional finding needs to be made by the planning commission, and if, on the city council, if the matters appeal to them, relating to the impact analysis report and the mitigations. So that, very briefly, is what occurs here. So it's not a new process, it's just a supplemented process.
I don't have any time. Pardon?
You have two minutes.
Okay, two minutes. Let me ask you this, could you give us a brief overview of what the difference between EIR and the negative declaration, and what the time sequence is, and how long each one of them takes?
Yes. Initially, when the planning department gets an application, it looks like at the environmental impacts of the project. If it finds, after a study, that all the environmental impacts can be mitigated by conditions imposed by the city, a mitigated negative deck is issued. This usually occurs, oh, about 40, 50 days into the process. If it cannot find that the environmental impact can, impacts cannot be mitigated, then an EIR by state law is required. And that usually takes somewhere between a year and 18 months to complete.
Okay. And let me ask you, from the planning department's standpoint, you made some, or your planning director rejected this ordinance or a version of it, what was the rationale for that?
Originally, in the ordinance that was approved by the planning commission, they had excluded, they deleted from the draft of ordinance prepared by the city attorney an exclusion that related to wholesale clubs, selling primarily bulk merchandise. an exclusion that related to wholesale clubs, selling primarily bulk merchandise, charging membership dues, and restricting merchandise sales to customers, and includes also the sale of motor vehicles. The reason they excluded that was they had no evidence in front of them that the impacts for that were any different than for another kind -- other kinds of superstores or big boxes, and so they voted to delete that. The planning director, enacting their -- on their behalf, disapproved that ordinance because what is before you has added that exclusion back in to the ordinance, and the planning director is obligated by the authority given to him by the commission to take such an action as directed to, as a matter of fact.
So although we're not talking about Walmart specifically, but if they became a membership club tomorrow, would they be excluded?
If they meet the standards here, yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to ask you, in the sense of the ordinance from the CRA standpoint, is that do you do some form of economic analysis before we go into a project as relates to an economic assistance area?
We typically, when an applicant comes in, do an economic analysis of the proposal. Frequently, it's triggered by the fact that there is a request for some type of assistance, and the justification for the level of assistance is part of it. A determination that a proposer will have the resources to be able to complete a project is done at the outset, rather than spend a great deal of time with someone who may not be able to carry forward on the proposal.
On the current process as we know it, and about 80 percent of it gets rolling before the conditional use permit or what's triggered as it relates to the new process, if that process is in place and begins to make determinations that it's negative or that it's not an economic benefit, then what happens to all the work that we've done up until that point?
There -- actually, there are a couple of different questions there. The initial evaluation of economic viability is on the overall project that has been proposed, and if a project does not appear to be viable, then the next question is, is it appropriate for a level of subsidy that would make it viable?
No, I think my question is, you've made a determination it's viable, and you've moved forward, but then the new process that is being proposed is now kicks in, and it's -- and a different conclusion comes forward.
That's the reason for suggesting on this chart, the CRA process chart, that if a superstore is contemplated as part of the original application, that the economic analysis, the impact analysis that is contemplated here, would be conducted at that time, rather than waiting until the time that the conditional use permit itself is filed. So you would have that as part of the upfront analysis.
Okay. The other thing is, is your assessment that the ordinance covers both expansion of existing stores, as well as the construction or remodeling of a brand-new store?
My understanding is that if an action results in a store reaching the minimum threshold of square footage, and the percentage requirements that are set forth, the minimum 100,000 feet and 10 percent, whether that is by expansion of an existing building or new construction, either would trigger it coming under the ordinance.
Okay. So if a store, this, such as example in the 8th district, is at 95,000 square feet, and they get another 30,000, and it fits this guideline, they would have -- that expansion would have to come under these guidelines?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Parks, your time now has expired. Let me recognize Councilmember Viera Gosa.
My microphone working? There it goes. I want to thank councilmembers Garcetti and Reyes for bringing this matter to our council. I think it's a very balanced proposal, frankly. A proposal that looks at economic development from the perspective, not only of land use planning, but also from the perspective of what the impact is on our communities. And the fact that you've allowed and require a voice for those communities, I think, is a step in the right direction. You know, every city has a responsibility to create jobs, to bring economic vitality to our communities and to our neighborhoods. But most of us believe that part of that responsibility is not just to bring any job, but to bring good jobs. Jobs where people can maintain a middle-class quality of life, jobs where people can buy a home at the end of the rainbow, jobs with health care and benefits. We know that just one of these superstores, for instance, has about 44,000 Californians working at their stores. 22,000 of them don't have benefits. We know that we're spending currently, in the state of California, about $86 million a year in public assistance for just one of those stores. And so while it's important for us to create jobs, this measure would allow us, this ordinance would allow us, to evaluate what the impact of that, those jobs on communities are. And it seems to me, it gives both the communities and the people that may be working in those communities, the opportunity for us to understand what the benefits are and what the negative impacts are to these kinds of developments. So I want to thank councilmember Garcetti and Reyes. I want to thank all of the people who are here today. We all support job creation in the city of Los Angeles. We want a strong, economically vibrant neighborhood. I believe that a great city is a city where we're growing together, where we prosper together, but this city has a right to ask the tough questions about whether we are, in fact, prospering together, where we're focusing development in a way that doesn't provide the benefits and the quality of life that's so important in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viera Gosa. Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you very much. I just -- this is one of those ordinances that I think has come a long way from where we started, and is a result of a lot of hard work, certainly not the least of that by our colleagues Eric Garcetti and Ed Reyes. And from where we started to where we are today, I think, is so significant in terms of bringing a lot of the people to the table, to craft what I consider to be sort of a compromise from where we began. And what I like about this is really sort of what my colleague Antonio Viera Gosa just said. This is a great idea to take a snapshot into the future and analyze the impacts that one of these stores would have on our community. And we have heard story after story after story, really across this nation, of places and cities and municipalities that, you know, had no regulation, had no limits on some of these big box stores, welcomed them into their community, believing they would create economic development, believing they would create good jobs, and then after the fact, coming to us, and I've heard those people talk to me personally, saying, "Boy, if we knew now, you know, if we knew then what we know now about the impacts that this kind of a store had on our community, we would have never allowed it." And I think that's exactly what this ordinance does. That allows us to know now what some people only know after the fact, and it will allow us to analyze these impacts. We have a new word for EIR, is now it's going to be an economic impact report, as opposed to just an environmental impact report. And I think that will allow us to have all the information we need, then to make good decisions in partnership with our communities on whether or not this is a good thing for our neighborhoods or not. So I think this is a great ordinance. I know this gives the community a voice. The only thing I would bring up is I didn't see a direct role for neighborhood councils in this process, and maybe you can speak to that, whether or not, besides this economic impact, there was another opportunity for neighborhood councils to have a community impact statement in regards, before the city council made that kind of a recommendation.
As a matter of course, when an application has been made and a public hearing has been scheduled, the affected neighborhood council is notified of this. It's also placed on the internet that the -- for the website for the neighborhood councils. So this, as soon as there's a hearing set, they are noticed that this is in process.
So as soon as this economic analysis is triggered, the neighborhood council will be notified?
They'll be notified of the procedure. They would then request for the various information from the -- that's available from the planning department and the CRA, CDD dependent. So they would have that available to them.
Because, again, ultimately, certainly, we're looking at the global impacts of these stores on the economic health of the city of Los Angeles, but ultimately, it's the neighborhoods who live with the impacts of one of these stores, either positively or negatively, and I want to make sure that they truly have a voice in this process. But good job, everybody.
Councilmember Sein.
Thank you. I look at this map, and I notice in my area, the San Fernando Valley, there are two areas, Topanga Canyon Boulevard, Reseda Boulevard, Sherman Way and some surrounding areas. When you look at affordable housing, and you look at the component that some of my colleagues discussed, can you tell me what the affordable housing situation is in the southwest San Fernando Valley? How about the median price?
I don't have at my fingertips the median price of housing in the southwest valley, but like most other portions of the city, there is a shortage of affordable housing, a very substantial shortage of affordable housing in the south and southwest portions of the valley.
And how about apartment rents?
Apartment rents there are, in many cases, similar to the apartment rents in the East Valley, which are also pricing out large numbers of people.
It's not uncommon to have rents over $2,000, and housing over half a million dollars, median price in the valleys approaching $500,000. And the concern, when we talk about quality of life, when we talk about people having an opportunity, if they work at a facility, at a business that pays $10 an hour, or $9 an hour, whatever the rate is, they can't afford the basic rent for an apartment. They'll never be able to afford a house, and they can't afford a family. They can't afford a car, and they can't afford what they strive for, the American dream. And I represent a district of San Fernando Valley that has extremely high rents, extremely high prices for homes, and there's no relief in sight. And that spreads to other areas. If we look downtown, a lot of lofts being built. And I met with one of the developers building lofts, and those lofts are selling for astronomical prices, adjacent to freeways. So the cost of living in this region of Los Angeles, Southern California, is going up like a rocket ship, and it's not coming down. When it comes to this measure, when it comes to trying to provide a policy in the city of Los Angeles where we can provide a job, we can provide sufficient compensation for the tasks that you do, so you can purchase a house or rent an apartment and provide for a family, I'll support this because it's going to help people. And the concern is, the issue that affects my area, and I do have areas impacted by this, Westfield, who met with me a number of times, was very concerned originally that this would be detrimental, and due to a number of meetings, and I know that they spent a lot of time to iron out what would work for them, what would work for an ordinance, what would work for a policy of the city. And I'm concerned about a renovation they're going to do in my district, Westfield Shopping Town, and I'm concerned about other parts of the city of Los Angeles where we're going to do some renovation. And I know that other districts of the city have a lot of poverty, and they have a lot of blight, and we want to change that citywide. And to accomplish that, to bring in something that's not going to provide the affordability to purchase a house, to rent an apartment, and to undercut, and as Councilmember Antonio Viera Gosa said, $85 million in subsidy from taxpayers because the wages are so low, the benefits aren't there. So I'm going to support this because morally, for me, it's the right thing to do. And if we do set a standard, which is what this will do, it'll help people. And that's what I believe we're elected to do in public offices, help people. The rich people, the poor people, and everything in between. And I think if you start counting the numbers, you're going to find a lot more people on the poor side and on the middle side than the rich side, and it's got to be balanced so everyone can ascend to a higher level of happiness and quality of life. So I want to support this. I know that the district that I represent has those two areas that are impacted by this, and the CRA in my district has done a tremendous job. This ordinance, I think, will benefit the people in the San Fernando Valley, as well as other parts of the city. So I appreciate you folks being here and making the comments, and I know that the -- at one, five minutes after one, while a lot of people are waiting, what are we going to do on this? I know we're not going to vote today, and I'm going to be coming back tomorrow to make that vote, to make the position that I've made a commitment to, that we're going to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Sein. Councilmember Ludlow.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Just about everything has been said. I did want to rise and thank a couple of people. First of all, I've gotten a number of cards and letters and emails from constituents in my district, and I don't think any issue in the 12 months that I've been on the council has generated as much input. I've got a number of businesses, small business owners, in council district 10 that have been watching this item with anticipation, as well as a number of people who are employed in the retail industry, and obviously, not the least of which have been employees that have been working for many of the industries in the retail industry that are -- companies in the retail industry that have been negatively impacted by superstores. I want to also thank members of the Housing Community Economic Development Committee, the co-chairs that have been working on this issue, councilmembers Ed Reyes and Eric Garcetti, but literally everybody on the committee who have been really working hard to try to craft a motion, craft an ordinance in the city that is balanced. I did take exception, however, to a representative of Walmart coming into our committee and actually asking for fairness. And when I look at what Walmart did in the city of Inglewood, to essentially try to buy its way through the voters and rip apart land use policies, rip apart local planning committees, and really tear at the fabric of what local government is all about by putting an initiative on the ballot to essentially get their way with the city of Inglewood, I had to rise and really question how they could come into this body here in the city of LA and ask for fairness. And so I will make it personal in the sense of calling out Walmart. I know there's a lot of effort to identify other supercenters and other superstores, but I think we need to call some of this what it is. I've read Sam Walton's biography. I got a chance to sort of look at sort of his early ideas, and nowhere in that biography did I see shipping U.S. jobs outside of the borders of the United States, nowhere did I see ripping apart local communities throughout rural and eastern United States, and nowhere in there did I see an effort to try to undercut the local communities and have them look in the way that many of the communities look like now in the seven-year, eight-year wake of a Walmart supercenter. So I think this is a multiplicity of issues. It's not only land use, it's not only eliminating blight, it's not only trying to make sure that people can move into the middle class who are living in poverty, but it's also about trying to prevent people who live in the middle class from falling into poverty. And that, to me, is why I think so many of my constituents have written letters asking for me to stand tall on this issue. I do believe that there is a place for responsible corporate citizenship, and I do believe that Walmart and any other corporation in this country who wants to do business here, they ought to recognize that this city council is open, and this city council is anxious to see forward-thinking corporations who value this country and are willing to support the American family. I think we have a moral obligation to vote this vote today, stand tall, send a message loud and clear that we are open for business, but we're not open for abuse. And so I congratulate everybody that has -- I congratulate everybody that has stood tall on this issue. Job well done, and I give a proud vote on behalf of the citizens and constituents of council district 10 in large support for this measure. So thank you all for your work, your diligence, your perseverance. We win in LA tomorrow the rest of the United States. Good job.
Councilmember Bruehl.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. And Martin, that's a hard act to follow, so I'll try my best. I'm not going to do the imitation like you did of Tom one day, because I -- that was very good. But I want to stand up, colleagues, and thank councilmember Garcetti and councilmember Reyes for taking a leadership role and taking on a tough issue. I think, as many of my colleagues have stated, this was a long road with lots of ups and downs, lots of compromise, give and take, to ensure that we balanced the needs of our communities, to ensure that we had a thriving economy. communities, to ensure that we had a thriving economy, both with small business and large business, and at the same time, protect workers, and also look to ensure that we were encouraging businesses to come to the city of Los Angeles. And I think what we have here before us today is a proposal that balances those needs, that appreciates our workers, appreciates the fabric of our economy, our small businesses, and someone who comes from a small family business that has struggled when large companies come into the area. I understand the challenges in meeting both, but I think that today, we are able to adopt an ordinance, or a report today, and an ordinance tomorrow, that is something that we can be proud of in the city of Los Angeles, that is a model for the nation that ensures that we look at that economic impact of those communities, and that we just don't say, "Come on in," without knowing the impacts of those areas. So, I'm pleased today to support my colleagues, Councilmember Ed Reyes and Councilmember Eric Garcetti, for their leadership on this issue. For those of you in the room who have fought the long fight, I thank you. You were there from day one. Thank you for your cards and emails and letters I've received. They do work, and so I want to tell you that, that we take those, we read them, we know what impacts our neighborhoods. And most people who sent the letter said, "Ensure that we can keep our jobs, keep our well-paying jobs, one that recognizes the benefits of the workers, and also to help our businesses." So, a thank you to, again, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Garcetti, and the mayor's office for their leadership in the Planning Department. This is a compromise that I think all of us can support, that is for our community, for our workers, and for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardines.
Thank you very much. In some ways, this is kind of like a deja vu. Ms. Hahn mentioned, had we known then what we know now? Well, actually, back then, when Antonio Viegosa and myself were in the legislature, we actually voted for and tried to pass similar legislation like this. And what happened was, we were thwarted by the fact that we did not have the support of most of the legislature, and also outside the legislature with the then-governor. I'd just like to point out that a lot has happened since then, but this ordinance that we have before us, this report and ordinance that we have before us, is in fact appropriate. And I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Councilmember Reyes and Councilmember Garcetti for their hard work. It's not easy to put a piece of legislation together like this and bring the consensus that we now have today in this city. And I'd also like to compliment what Mr. Ludlow said. As we do in Los Angeles, it's going to be the example of the kind of legislation that should happen in other places, whether it be at the city level, the county level, state level. I don't count on the federal government, but that's not their business. But at every level of government that we can possibly get this kind of responsible ordinance. This ordinance, in a nutshell, basically does what we all pretend to do when we run for office, which is to provide for our constituencies policies of fairness, to bring our constituencies aware of issues that perhaps they don't think about every day. But when you look at the Berkeley report, you see that $9 an hour plus public assistance versus $14-plus dollars an hour and less public assistance certainly is better, is something that's better not only for the individual worker, but for society at large. And I think it's very important for us to have been very mindful of our responsibilities as a city government, to make sure that we use our planning process and whatever other process we have, to make sure that we can assure that whenever possible. In addition to that, I'd like to state, as was pointed out to me by Mr. Garcetti, our state comptroller, Steve Wesley, actually pointed out recently, his comments on the Berkeley study was a message to us, local government. You can, and you should, pass ordinances like this. It is your pocketbooks, it is your constituents, and that's basically where the rubber meets the road, right here at local government. We're doing the responsible thing here. Perhaps attempts have happened in the past. I feel confident that here today, we're going to be able to do something positive for this city. And unlike when Antonio Viegosa and myself had tried to pass this issue in the state legislature, we didn't have the support of the administrative office. The governor did not support it. And I have it on good authority and personal authority that this mayor is ready and willing and looking forward to seeing this on his desk and signing it, to show that we have unity, conformity, and we've put out a good product. Congratulations once again to everybody who's worked on it, not only the members, but our staff as well.
Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I'll try to be brief as well, but I thought it was important, as some of you have done, to stand up and pledge my support for this item, and I look forward to the vote tomorrow as well. But also, to thank and commend both Councilmembers Garcetti and Councilmembers Reyes for their years of work on this issue and getting us until this point. Colleagues, many of you have been very articulate as to the merits of what we're undertaking here, from a planning and land use and economic perspective. And I think all of that actually fits under a very convenient umbrella that we call "people," because I think ultimately, that's what this is about. It's very important to recognize, and many of you have discussed, what happens to employees at some of these corporations that have supercenters as part of their operations, their wages, their benefits, and the ripple effects of those types of economics. But I think it also goes far beyond that. We, colleagues, are either going to, either through our land use policies and procedures, going to foster the type of direction that certain industries have taken, our city, communities around Los Angeles, and really throughout our country, or we're going to do something about it. And today and tomorrow, we are doing something about it, because it is very clear, as you have learned, and as we have read about in the newspapers, that this trend of supercenters feeds an international economic engine that has proven to be a downward spiral for our communities. And today and tomorrow, we can do something about that. But colleagues, I also ask that we just take a minute, take a step back, take a deep breath, and think about community. Think about lifestyles and the quality of life that we're all trying to provide for our constituents. And you think about some of the best-known places within the city that people point to as good communities, people interacting, people enjoying themselves, each other, and the assets of communities. Los Feliz Village and Larchmont Village, La Mert Park and Little Tokyo, Boyle Heights and the area up and down Chavez Avenue, Valley Village in the San Fernando Valley, San Pedro, near the waterfront. What are the attributes that some of these great communities have in common? It's people being able to walk and interact with each other, whether they're shopping, or dining, or visiting local cultural institutions. It is not the presence of huge, hundreds of thousands of square feet, acres and acres of parking-type establishments. Yes, they have shown to have some sort of role or presence in the country nowadays, but when each and one of us is struggling to create positive, livable communities within our districts, colleagues, let's look at where the city of Los Angeles has succeeded for years and years and generations and generations, and look to them as a model of how we can continue to succeed in the future. Colleagues, that is why I stand in support of this measure. I thank my colleagues, Garcetti and Reyes, for bringing us to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Labange.
Call for the question.
Is there any objection to speaking?
I need to introduce an amendment, report back request on Section 5.
All right.
That would be the...
Without objection, that'll be an amendment. Is there, again, any objection to...
There's one other amendment as well on Recommendation 6. This was working with Mr. Parks's staff to change second sentence in Recommendation 6, that this information shall include the information required by the ordinance, and delete the words after the comma beginning as well as. I'll give this to you.
All right, then the clerk will receive those two amendments. Then, with that, we do now have those two amendments that were made, and the matter is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
All right. The committee report is approved, and the ordinance will be before us tomorrow. Thank you all for your patience and attention. Next item, Madam Clerk?
The next item, Madam President, item number 29, was called special by Councilmember Zine. A motion is required on that matter.
Mr. Zine, again, could we have quiet as people are exiting the council chambers? Mr. Zine on item 29.
Thank you, Madam President. This item refers to another exemption, and the concern that was brought up in committee, this was sent forward without a recommendation, is the charter permits the general manager to have two exempt positions. And what we find happening now is, many of the departments are expressing an interest and desire to have another exemption. And the concern I have is of the fairness doctrine of the civil service that we have in the city of Los Angeles, and I know sanitation does a fine job. The concern I have is not with that particular department, but we see a continuing flow away from the civil service rule when it comes to the exempt positions. By charter, the general manager and two exempt positions are within those boundaries, and with this item today, it follows a long list, and I'm sure a continuing list, of exempt positions for the other positions of leadership in the specific departments. And what I'm trying to determine, that's why Councilmember Bruehl and I sent this forward without a recommendation, is to get a sense from this body, do we want to hold true to the civil service rules and procedures, or do we want to continue the exemptions and extend those out? By charter, there can be 150 exemptions citywide, and we're in the 120-some range at this particular time. So, that's the issue that is of concern to me as a personnel committee, and that's why this matter was sent forward without a recommendation on the issue of the exempt position. The union was supposed to have a representative here to discuss this issue. They did testify in committee that they were not supporting this, they were opposed to this, and for that reason, we wanted to have this body decide, as we see more of these requests for exemptions coming through on positions within the different departments. And I see we have our general manager of personnel here, Maggie Wayland, we have the director of sanitation, so if you can address this, and I would wish that the opposing side would be here to express their concerns that they did in committee, but I know they're not here, but it's incumbent upon this policymaking body to have a standard, and it's really unfair for some departments to have these exemptions, other departments not, and we really have a lopsided idea right now, where there are two are permitted, and now we have this request, but again, this is not isolated. And I know that the personnel department did a report, which I requested, which shows that we're still holding, I think it's 81% of the positions are still coming from civil service, but we wanted to make sure that the charter, which outlined how many exemptions could be, there was a specific reason for that. Maggie Wayland.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me just start off with saying that the charter allows for automatic exemptions, two per department. The charter does not preclude departments from coming back and asking for additional exemptions for assistant general managers. Those requests come under the 150 cap. This has been the case since the charter was amended. This is not a new issue. There are currently 25 positions, management positions, that are exempt under the 150. I wear two hats here, both as the general manager of the Personnel Department and the president of the General Managers Association. And on behalf of the general managers, we find that the exemption process has worked beautifully. If you will look at the report that is attached to a letter that I submitted, you will see 81% of people who are exempt assistant general managers have come from the civil service. In addition, as far as increasing diversity, the African-American representation has doubled, Latino representation has tripled. So, we think that for management-level jobs, that is a considerable success story. So, it is the belief of the association that we continue to do as we have been. There has been no abuse that has ever been exposed. We've had many opportunities to talk to the union. And in addition, when employees, most assistant general managers are in a bargaining unit, with the exception of the Personnel Department assistant general managers, there is a provision within their contract that should they be demoted, that they have the opportunity to negotiate how that demotion will occur. So, with all due respect, Councilmember Zine, I appreciate the position that you are in, and I do understand that the president of the Management Employees Association has some difficulty. However, if there's any question about what the charter, the framers of the charter intended, I've also brought with me Steve Pressburg, who was the executive director of the elected Charter Commission, who could provide any insight and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Maggie. At this time, let me call on Councilmember Tom Labange.
Members, I just want to say, Dennis, yes, a great question. How do we feel? I'm for exemptions. It's 150 positions that the charter allows. Sanitation believes they can have this, to pick the talent. Now, it's up to us to make sure we watch that. It's up to the mayor to make sure they watch that. It's up to the CAO to make sure they watch that, to make sure that they're performing. And if they're not performing, then we say, "Thank you very much," and they're out. Real simple. We encourage to get the best to come here, because this is a very competitive world as far as government services. Is that correct, Margaret?
Yes.
And Maggie, I know, I was calling you formerly, if you can hear me. Maggie, this is correct when it comes to the recruiting for general managers and other positions in our world of government, whether it's the city of Riverside, the city of San Francisco, city of Tahoe, New Mexico. They're all competitive and looking for jobs. You read the Western States Magazine, Dennis?
Yeah.
And it talks about all those positions of open, from a fire chief to a sanitation engineer. It's extremely competitive, and I think we should have exemptions. And also, it should be incumbent upon us as a council to encourage that we get the best talent as AGMs to build the bench. And Rita, you've helped us out in so many areas here. Here's a prime example of a great executive who worked within the CAO's office, and worked in the Housing Department, worked at the Transportation Department, now the Sanitation Department. So, it's so important, Bureau, excuse me, to have that, and I think you have that when you have exemptions in these positions throughout. But it's up to us to watch them, to make sure that the exempt employees are pushing as hard as they can to get the maximum amount of effort to lead the department, to reach their golden objectives as they serve the people of Los Angeles. Thank you. I vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I will take that as a recommendation for a motion to approve the exemption as requested.
Yes, thank you.
Let me call on Councilmember Zine.
Yes, I understand that, and I clearly, from the Personnel Committee, want to get a sense of where this body is going with this. The charter, Mr. Pressburg's here, he worked on the Charter Commission. I was a former Charter Commissioner. I know this issue came up, and there was a long debate about having the civil service system maintain the integrity, and there was a specific reason why there were two exempt positions under the general manager, which is also exempt, and to have a total 150 citywide and not exceed that, there were specific issues and reasons for that. Another issue that I want to bring up, and this comes up in the EERC, and Maggie, you were there when we had our last EERC, and we discussed this. When a person in an exempt position no longer serves in that exempt position, and they're moved to another position, we maintain their salary at that exempt position, which is normally higher than it would be otherwise. That's another problem that has emerged with the exempt positions, and we just had one at the last EERC, where someone, for whatever reason, is shuffled to another position, but we maintain a salary for reasonable reasons at a much higher level than they would receive in another position. And that is another situation that doesn't deal with, and I'm not picking on sanitation, but I'm trying to say is that the policy I want to adhere to is something that we support, and it's not abused. According to the survey you did, clearly, there's no abuse with affirmative action, with opportunities for people that want to assume those positions. We haven't taken that money from the outside, they've come from within the city family. The issue is the fairness doctrine, and if we should exempt three, or four, or five, then we do that. But when someone in an exempt position is no longer their exempt position, and you've seen what's happened, is the salary compensation stays in the higher position. Can you comment on that, please?
Well, I think that that's discretionary on the part of the council. However, I think that you're evaluating a number of issues. Some of it is a risk management issue. Some of it has to do with the fact that I think that many councilmembers would prefer to give someone a soft landing, as opposed to the harshness of demoting that person down to a wage that is significantly lower. I can't really comment on what the rationale is of the council, however, I think that there have been a number of reasons for staff to make those recommendations. But getting back to whether or not it's fair to have two exempt AGMs or four... But getting back to whether or not it's fair to have two exempt AGMs or four, if you have two, or if you have a total of four, I think we all would prefer that everybody be on the same playing field. And I think it's rather difficult to use your two automatic exemptions, then you have two more positions and you hire them as civil servants. They're accruing seniority, and they're tenured. I think that all employees who are at that level ought to be treated the same, which is why we have the option of using part of the 150 cap, or the 150, to make up for those additional assistant general managers, because some departments have more than two.
Well, no, I agree. And that's my concern, is that we bring it to this full body instead of having, what we've had is piecemeal through the Personnel Committee, where we have one here, we have there, to have a policy that we can start to follow to say, within the 150 category, so we will be in line. So it's not that this particular department has a problem with it, or I don't have a problem with it. What I want to have is a policy that we can subscribe to, to stay within that boundary, because right now, it's uneven, it's not fair. And what I'm trying to establish is a sense of fairness where it will be equalized. And at this particular time, it's not equalized. And that's what I'm trying to come to with my colleagues, to find out if they're supportive of that, and if they're supportive of that, then when it comes to our committee, so be it, and that's what we will do.
Mr. Zine, that would be a separate motion to ask for a new policy to be created. What we have right now before us is just a motion that's been made to grant this position. It doesn't preclude the other motion from being considered and coming back to committee for that discussion. But at this point, we have no one else who wishes to speak. We have a motion before us to grant this exemption as explained. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Forthwith. Yes, Mr. Ludlow.
Madam President, just a point of information while you go into the next item. Just want to acknowledge in the chambers today, Joseph Loeb, founder of Breakaway Technologies, one of the biggest urban technology organizations in urban communities to help young people learn how to use computers, internet, and all sorts of technology devices. We're glad and thrilled to have great resident of the 8th District. His organization is based in the 10th District, so we've got bilateral support here.
Thank you. Bad introduction, Mr. Ludlow. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 35 was called special, and that was being held for the city attorney.
All right, let's hear from the city attorney on item 35.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the chambers if the owner or operator of the gas station at 507 Antrada is present in chambers right now. Hearing no response, this notice was provided, but out of an abundance of caution, our office recommends that this matter be continued one week in order to give additional notice to the applicants.
All right. If there's no objection, we will continue this matter for one week. But let me ask the city clerk to pay special attention to getting notice out of a rehearing and renotice to the applicant of that, to the owner of the gas station, the gas station operator at that location. And without objection, we will continue this for one week. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, item number 103 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I need for you to support me in renewing or extending an interim control ordinance in Wilmington for another year. This was the interim control ordinance that we actually adopted last year in July, and it limits the ability for open storage yards to be placed in a certain area. And particularly, I was concerned when I came into office, was again, trying to give Wilmington residential, healthy neighborhoods, and industrial zones separated from each other. And this ordinance has already made a difference. Our planning department has been working with the Wilmington Neighborhood Council in crafting the permanent ordinance, but a year just wasn't long enough for us to codify this ordinance, so I'm going to ask you to extend it for another year. But again, I think what we're doing with this will go a long way towards allowing residents, and particularly the kids in Wilmington, to grow up in neighborhoods that are not subject to the blight, noise, dirt, pollution, rodents, odors, the things that have been coming from these open junkyards and scrap material yards. So I hope you'll extend this for another year so we can make sure we can have time to craft the final ordinance that will really forever improve the quality of life for people in Wilmington. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 106 was called special for Councilmember Parks, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Okay. Mr. Parks, item 106 is now before us. Forthwith, please, on the previous item, 103.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just an amending motion has been circulated regarding the cost for a event in the Tom Bradley Room upstairs.
Okay. Without objection, we'll consider item 106 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. There is a special one motion that has been presented to the council. It was presented by Councilmember Weiss, seconded by Councilmember Zine, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the police department has requested that council issue a reward offer for the murder of Raymond Fouquet. Immediate action is required for the protection of the public to expeditiously solve this crime. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering this substantive motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? On the findings, seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Findings are approved on the motion itself. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, just to correct the city attorney, it's Marie Fouquet who was murdered. She was a 78-year-old woman who lived in my district, and she was murdered. Her body was discovered by her husband, Raymond Fouquet, and a short time after the murder occurred, the murderer was captured on videotapes using her ATM cards on the West Side. We held a press conference with the LAPD this morning to try to get the word out about the crime and to get the word out about the reward. Hopefully, someone will come forward and help us solve this brutal crime. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. On special one, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Labange requests to be excused September 21st and 22nd for city business that meets council policy.
Mr. Labange is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused Friday, October 15th for city business that meets council policy.
Excuse is granted.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Friday, August 20th for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Ludlow moves. Ms. Gruel is excused.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, it's the end of our agenda. Thank you for your patience and focus today. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Labange.
A couple of things I just want to say. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith is not here, but a great Angelino, John Elway, was inducted just this last Sunday in the Pro Football Hall of Fame. He was turned to be one of, and I truly believe, one of the greatest players in all levels, both in his high school days at Granada Hills High, in his college days at Stanford, and obviously, his pro days for the Denver Broncos. And I know that was a big thing for the people of Granada Hills, and I know Mr. Smith, I wish was here to join with me, and we all will send congratulations to John Elway on being inducted to the Pro Football Hall of Fame.
And it was great that his old high school coach was able to travel to Colorado and then travel with John Elway to the Hall of Fame and take part of those ceremonies.
It's a wonderful story, and it's a wonderful event. I did go back to Canton once for my teammate, Mike Haynes, who played against John, who was inducted, and you go into Canton, and it's a great Hall of Fame. And congratulations to Big John and all the coaches and everybody at Granada Hills.
And speaking of Ohio, Mr. Ludlow.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I played in Akron, in the Rubber Bowl. And so any of the Ohioites that are out there from Akron, just a stone's throw away from Canton, I couldn't quite get to Canton. I just wanted to remind constituents tonight, 6:30 PM in my district office, we're going to have the Cultural Affairs Department workshop on the Youth Arts and Education Grant Program. Nonprofit organizations are eligible to apply for these grants. Current or previously funded arts organizations, as well as new applicants, are strongly encouraged to attend the workshop. So I'm encouraging people who are interested in trying to access funding through Youth Arts and Education Grant Program to come out tonight with Cultural Affairs Department at 6:30, 1819 Southwestern Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Other announcements? Colleagues, Mr. Weiss.
We will start the ITGS meeting at around 2 o'clock today.
Okay. Other final announcements? There's no other announcements, colleagues. Let me add one of my own. For everybody watching from home, there will be a Public Safety Town Hall meeting tonight at the Northeast Valley Multipurpose Senior Center in Pacoima on the corner of Van Nuys and Glen Oaks, across the street from the Boys and Girls Club, with Captain Kirk Albanese of Foothill Division and Chief William Bratton. So for the members of the Northeast Valley community interested in public safety issues, please come out. We look forward to seeing you from 7 to 9 PM this evening. And do we have any adjourning motions today? Please rise for adjourning motions.
Yeah, thank you. Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Gypsy Boots, who lived into his 90s, was an absolute figure of great health in our community. Lived in Los Feliz area, had three sons, including one who was in my class at John Marshall. He preached health for over 50 years of his life, and he also was a fixture at parades and at USC football games and Raider-RAM games. Gypsy Boots, an icon in Los Angeles lore. I ask that we adjourn in his memory. In addition, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Bernard John Lernahan, who was born January 27, 1933, and lived to July 25, 2004. He was born in Los Angeles, born to a Los Angeles police officer, Thomas Joseph Lernahan, one of 11 children, the baby of that big family. Went to Los Angeles High School, and at 18, literally before, went downtown to Broadway with his buddy from LA High School and enrolled and enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. His buddy got sent to the Marine Depot at 116th and Normandy. He got sent to Korea and served in the Korean War and was wounded in action in Korea. Upon recovery and returning to Los Angeles area, he married his high school sweetheart, Helen Toll, at St. Gregory's Church here in Los Angeles. He lived for many years in La Brea District and was a very beautiful man who was unique and like no other. His two children, Kevin and Connie, were grown and raised, lived to see their father live to be 70 years old. He was a tremendous inspiration in my life. I lived with him in 1961 when my mother was ill. He stopped by. He was my uncle, Bernard, who had the looks of your dad, Eric. He had that beautiful face, that beautiful chin, and that powerful voice, as an uncle did. And in 1961, he stopped by the family home when my mother was ill, and off I went and lived with her, lived in Arizona with Bernard and his family. He loved this country, he loved the United States Marine Corps, and he loved Los Angeles, although he criticized me because he moved east towards La Mirada, and he thought we were a little too liberal here in this great city of angels. So we had a few arguments a few times over the course, but he was an absolute inspiration and lived a great life. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Bernard Lernahan, one of the great members of the Lernahan family.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Ms. Inez Caston, who died Monday, July 19th, at Sentinel Hospital in Inglewood. She's a prominent gospel musician and widow of the late Dr. Jonathan Caston, who was a former pastor of Trinity Baptist Church. She was born on November 1, 1914, in Jackson, Mississippi. Her love of music began at age six and expanded through the years at Trinity, where she served as director of the Inez C. Caston Gospel Chorus, state director of music for the Western Baptist State Convention, instructor of music for the Congress of Christian Education of the National Baptist Convention for 36 years, and also is organist of its Women's Auxiliary for 23 years. She's received many accolades, citations, and awards too numerous to mention here today. She'll be sorely missed by her loving family, her Trinity Baptist Church family, and her many lifelong and adoring friends. Inez C. Caston. I have one other. Some of you may be aware of this, as with sadness that I report that Wilma J. Pender, our Assistant City Attorney at DWP, suffered the loss of her father, Mr. John A. Retta, on Monday, August 2. Mr. Retta is a retired Los Angeles fireman, serving from 1937 to 1957 during a period when most fire stations were racially segregated. Mr. Retta is considered to be a pioneer by the Stentorians. Both the Stentorians and the LA City Fire Department have expressed their condolences. The funeral is actually being held today. The address to send any information would be to the family of John A. Retta, 1734 Buckingham Road, LA 90019. They ask for people to have that information, so I'm sure that there are many members that may wish to join on that.
Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask the council to adjourn in the memory of Corwin W. Davis, who died at the far-too-young age of 54 after battling a year-long struggle with cancer. He was born in Santa Monica, had gone to Santa Monica High School, Santa Monica City College, and then the Arts Center College of Design, where he met his wife Janet. When he met Janet, he and Janet decided to move from Santa Monica as a young married couple to the Pacific Palisades in the city of LA. As a young boy himself, with his brother, he had gotten very active in the Boy Scouts and Indian Guides and the YMCA, and he carried on those activities as an adult when he had his children, a daughter, two daughters, Christine and Elizabeth, and son Michael. And he spent his time encouraging his children to be very involved in community activities, and then he joined them. He was extremely proud of his children's scholastic and athletic achievements and their community service. His daughters were Indian princesses, his son was a Boy Scout. Actually, the greatest, one of the great prides of Corwin's life was when his son Michael got the Eagle Scout Award. He also then participated as a member of the Y Board for the Palisades of Malibu YMCA, and for a number of years, worked with the community on behalf of the Y to work through securing a title to a piece of property that had had some difficulty in terms of letting the Y secure it. But he worked diligently, actively, participating in that, literally to the end of his life. His dedication to fitness was well-known, and he would often show up in later years at 5:30 in the morning at Gold's Gym, working on his, just an incredible picture of him and his very strong physique. You go to his family home, and it is just lined with pictures of Corwin and each of his kids at various stages in their life, in the multicolored jerseys of such teams as the Bumblebees, the Green Machine, and the Pink Panthers. He, a memorial service was held at the end of July, and the family has asked for donations to be made in lieu of flowers to the Palisades of Malibu YMCA, so the tradition of kids and family involvement can continue. He will be very, very much missed in the Palisades for his well-known activities with children.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Emmett Cash, a longtime resident of Southern California. Passed away Sunday, August 8, at the age of 93. Funeral services will be Thursday, August 11, in Oakland, California. Mr. Cash is the father of Emmett Cash III, a longtime resident of the 8th District. He survived by eight children, 23 grandchildren, 27 great-grandchildren, and five great-great-grandchildren.
Ms. Perry? Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.